Okay, we are live. We look for Amy. Hey, we're waiting on Amy.
She said she clicked on a link in the email and it's not working. Where are you? Hey, Elizabeth. If Harper's still up there, will you tell her that her mom wants her to come home now? Okay. I'm going to be in a city council meeting, okay? Can you tell Luke and Emily?
Okay, there's Amy.
Okay, I'm going to lock the door, okay?
Okay. There. Can everyone see us? Yes.
Except for Gavin. There he is. All right. And we have legal counsel with us?
We do.
Okay. Good deal. All right, I appreciate everyone's patience as we got this rolling today. Technical difficulties, as you may have gathered. We'll go ahead and get the regular city council meeting, May 20th, 2020. Call the order. I could start with roll call. Wendy?
Wendy Henley.
Buck? We can't hear you, Buck. Sorry, you're muted, bud.
Buck Shapiro.
Perfect, thank you. Sarah?
Sarah Hudson.
Amy?
Amy Vitello.
Gavin?
Gavin Massengill.
Amber?
Amber Lewis.
Ashley? You're muted, Ashley. It's all right. And then we have legal counsel on and obviously Mayor Dyson is here. At this point, we're going to open up public comments. This is intended for anyone wanting to speak on an item that's not otherwise on the agenda. I'm going to request that we keep the comments to three minutes. Just in case anyone isn't familiar, this is a, not necessarily a question and answer type forum. More of an opportunity for you to speak. And then please provide your name and subsequently, if you want one of the council members or somebody at city staff to follow up, do follow up with city staff and provide the contact information. With that, just in case anyone's joining us for the first time, if you're on your PC, there is a, at the bottom of your screen, there could be a little hand icon. If you click on that, that'll raise your hand and will allow our city administrator to know that you wish to speak, whether it be for, during the public comments or on a subsequent agenda item. You'll be called on to then unmute your mic. In the meantime, if you're not speaking, for the sake of background noise, go ahead and mute your mic so that we can kind of keep this flowing pretty smoothly and everybody can hear the conversation. I guess I should also note, if you're joining us from a handheld device, there's actually three dots down in your bottom right corner of your screen. If you click on that, you'll also find the hand icon that is similar. Want you to raise your hand for public comment. There's also on your device, a chat function. I'll be the first to note that I do not monitor that chat during the meeting as regularly as I can. I might rely on both my city secretary, Ashley, and city administrator, Amber, to keep an eye on that in case anything relevant pops up. With that, I will open up public comment at 3:13. Do we have anybody here to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Mayor Jordan Scott has his hand raised.
Great.
Unmute him.
Great.
Okay, Jordan, you have the floor. I think he's unmuted on his own device.
All right, I think I've unmuted. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, first, let me just say thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules during the day to help the city of Rollingwood govern during these tough times. I'm going to make a simple and short request to either add or move one of those automatic speedometers that we have located kind of towards the McDonald's on Rollingwood over to Hatley. There are some upset neighbors on Hatley between, I'm trying to think, Nixon and the next street over. And there's a bit of speeding going on in that section as people come down the hill on both sides. Having been walking the neighborhood a bunch, I've seen it happening and haven't been driving down that street, I've definitely accidentally speeding down that hill quite a bit. And it may be helpful to have one of those flashing lights and signs for a little bit to help slow people down as they're driving through the neighborhood. That's all. And again, thanks for all y'alls hard work.
Thanks a lot, Jordan. I've noticed the same. It's a really good thing to point out. Do we have anybody else signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have Greg the Moss. Hope I didn't butcher that.
Hey Greg, thanks for joining us. I think the floor is yours once Amber has unmuted you.
It is.
Hey Greg, if we can't hear you, you might check just to make sure that you're not muted on your end.
It shows that he's not muted.
Hey Greg, can you hear us?
Ashley, do you want to tell him how to, how he might get his microphone working?
Left corner of the screen is a little microphone if you're on a cell phone. This is audio underneath it. If you are calling in, I believe once you unmuted him, he should have had the floor.
Looks like he's joined on a computer. Greg, in the lower right hand, there's a wheel that's the set, go to audio settings.
Yeah, that's usually where you can select the microphone, Greg.
Can you guys hear me now by any chance?
Yes.
We can.
Hey, all right, sorry about that.
No worries. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thanks so much for having me. I will try to be quick given I just wasted almost two minutes of your time trying to figure out how to work my computer.
You're good.
I recently, about six months ago, purchased the property at 2803 Vance Lane. And there is a street light at the front of my property that requires power lines to run the length of my property on the back and then up the side to power that street light. What I'm requesting is to allow me to replace that street light on the property with something that I could wire with underground electricity so that I could remove those power lines. I spoke a bit with Amber, who had spoke with Chief Brady, and the preference, of course, is that streetlights are inexpensive and effective deterrent of crime. Of course, agree with that, but I would, rather than removing the streetlight, would like to replace it with a light post in that same area so that I could then remove those power lines and supply it with underground electricity. That is kind of the request.
Great. But I tell you what, Greg. This is, I don't have an answer for you just yet, but I'll be happy to start taking a look at that closer with council and having city staff help dig up some detail for us and see what's possible there.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Greg. Stay safe, bud.
All right.
Amber, Ashley, do we have anyone else signed up for public comments?
We do not.
We don't? Okay. One thing that has been brought to my attention is we're not live streaming on our YouTube channel. I don't know if that's possible, but if it is, let's go ahead and check that. And with that, I'll give a breather if anyone else is here for public comment. Going once, going twice. It is down in your, it's the hand. Anyone? Amber?
No.
Nope. Okay, well, we'll close the public comment then at 3:19. And we will move on to our presentations. Up first, we have Joe Canaruba with K-Freeze providing the final update for the infrastructure improvements plan. Just for context, council and public, this is largely already been presented to us. There were a few little nits that K-Freeze wanted to go back and take a look at and provide to us. They've provided this to us, but haven't necessarily presented to us. So just wanted to have Joe come back and give us a heads up. I don't anticipate this being new material. Joe, floor?
Okay, let me unmute. Actually, I'm going to see if I can promote him as panelist. Okay, Joe, you should be ready to go.
Hey, Joe.
Looks like he's still unmuted. He's participating on a computer.
Down in your lower left corner.
Joe, if you're on a computer, just move your mouse at the bottom of the screen. And then there's a microphone icon and a camera icon. You have to press them if they're orange and then you should be able to talk and have the camera work.
Thank you, Wendy.
I also have Caroline. Let me promote her as a panelist. Hey Caroline, you're unmuted. You're set as a panelist.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can. Thanks, Caroline.
Hey, great. I see that Joe's on, but it looks like, like you said, he's still muted. I can start out if he's not able to join.
Why don't you go ahead and pick this up, please?
Okay, great. Well, like we said when we were with you in February, we have our final Rollingwood Infrastructure Improvements Plan report. And in February, we talked about a few changes that we wanted to make to the report. We updated the cost estimates to correct a spreadsheet so that our cost total changed from $19.7 million for the projects down to $17.9 million. And we checked the rest of the spreadsheets, rest of the projects, to make sure everything was working correctly. We also wanted to clarify impervious cover. There were some questions at the February meeting about how the conceptual model that was created for our study incorporated impervious cover. We checked with our technical staff that did the modeling. And what we learned was that because of the high level, planning level model that we created, the, the model used a conservative approach. It basically treated the entire city as impervious. It routed all of the stormwater overland and didn't allow for infiltration of the water into the soil. What we did do, and like I said, that's a conservative approach because then all of the stormwater has to be routed, you know, into the pipes, into the channels. And so it, it provided data for our projects that then led to more conservative cost estimates and pipe sizing. For the overland flow to account for the different surfaces throughout the city, we used a Manning's N value factor, which basically just refers to the friction factor across the city. We used an average value that's an approximation of all the surfaces around the city. Their followers chose based on the characteristics of Rollingwood to account for the mixture of asphalt, grass, brush, concrete, different surfaces. And so it looks like Joe joined, so I can turn it over to him. But that's the, that's the gist of the updates that we made.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
Mute.
You're still muted, Joe.
What's that?
There we go.
I had a, I had a leave, I apologize for that. I left the meeting and came back in and then I figured out I waved my hand, which is good. I don't know that I would have said that any better than Caroline did, but I'll reiterate without going step by step that we went back and we double-checked everything. We had some language to describe how we treated impervious cover and how we treated sort of the average flow across the topography. And, and that was really it. Other than to add that, I'm sorry it took so long to get to this point. We had gone through the report a day or two after the council meeting. And then we got caught up in this, this whole work at home order. But that's really what we wanted to let you all know is that we'd gone through the report. We double-checked it, we edited the language, we checked the numbers, and we're confident that we're done now.
Great.
The last thing is that, you know, pending your approval this afternoon, what we'll do is we're going to have the engineer that did the modeling and is familiar with the report. She's just going to take one quick read through it and then she'll sign and seal it. So you'll have a signed and sealed report delivered to you, you know, after you approve it.
Great. Thanks, Joe. I'm going to open it up to any questions from council. I do just want to underscore one of the, the points that you correctly, you made. I don't even think a day had passed before K-Freeze had provided the updates. So thanks for your prompt attention to that. The only reason there has been a multi-month lag between then and now, as Joe correctly pointed out, a pandemic that we're all very, very much aware of. So thanks, Joe. Council, any thoughts or questions that you have for the K-Freeze staff? Great. With that then, Amber, do we need to take action on accepting this as the final report from, from K-Freeze?
Please.
If council's moved to do it, I would recommend, I believe, after a review of the scope of duty and work contracted with K-Freeze, I think they've fulfilled their obligations. And despite that this has been a long process, they were really good about keeping on a tight timeline so, and on budget. So thank you very much for that. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion to accept this as the final report.
I move to accept the IP as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Gavin, a second from Sarah. Do we have additional thoughts or conversation, counsel? If none, I'll go ahead and call the vote. Wendy?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
The motion carries. Again, K-Freeze, Joe, and Caroline, I want to thank you and your staff for doing a great bit of work and providing us with data that we needed to hopefully make us a healthier and safety community.
Well, thank you all very much for your patience and understanding and for the opportunity. We really appreciate it.
Likewise. Look forward to working with you down the line. Take care, Joe.
Take care. Be well.
Okay. Next up, we have item three, presentation of proposals to perform a comprehensive plan for the city of Rollingwood. Again, just to provide some context, because the world is a much different place. Despite the fact that this RFP went out quite a while ago, a lot has happened. But just for context, and I'll let Amber fill it in on a specific date as to when the RFP went out, assuming you have that at your fingertips. In any case, what we have back are two, two proposals, one from Freeze and Nichols and one from Pegasus. Up first, we'll go ahead and invite the team from Freeze and Nichols to present, please.
Hey, Chance, I'm promoting you to panelist. Okay.
All right. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here virtually versus in person. We are very excited to be pursuing this. My name is Chance Sparks and I am the Urban Planning Project Manager based out of the Austin office and San Marcos office of Freeze and Nichols. And we're pleased to present on this comprehensive plan. And as you mentioned, this is a, a different place than when we prepared the proposal. But I think you'll find that we've adapted and have continued our, to show our strength as a firm. We have a very strong history of delivering high-quality, award-winning plans in Texas, Oklahoma, and other states. And we build this on a foundation of client service. We focus on serving municipalities and other government agencies. Ninety-five percent of our work is public sector and we do that to avoid conflicts of interest and so that we can maintain objectivity in any recommendations. That being said, all of us come from a mixture of public and private side backgrounds that allows us to provide that perspective as we go forward. We are viewed as thought leaders in the profession. We hold a number of leaderships through, positions throughout the American Planning Association in particular. For example, I'm actually the Texas chapter president for APA. Wendy Shabey, our principal for this project, is on the National Board of Directors from the American Planning Association. And we have two that are also fellows in the ICP, which means that they have contributed extensively to the profession. There's not a whole lot of those nationwide. There's also a couple of other folks, Don Werick and Shad Como. They are not part of this project team, but they're always there available for us to tap. So everybody see with the blue box is part of the team that will be working on Rollingwood. We do like to emphasize that we, we know comprehensive planning. Nobody in Texas has done more comprehensive plans or development ordinances. And what's really special about this is no two of these are ever the same. Freeze and Nichols takes the approach of planning with humility. That our plans reflect the community vision, their hopes, their dreams for the future. They do not reflect us. For any issue, we know that there's countless paths to find a resolution that are correct. We try to find the ones that are the best fit for you as the client. And that's why we have such a great outstanding record of implementation. We pay attention to the client, the capabilities, and their culture. To kind of put it succinctly, we are not hammers looking for nails. We find the right tool for the job and then we show you how to use it. Comprehensive planning, though, is really important. We know that Rollingwood's unique in that this is actually your first comprehensive plan, despite the city having been around for 50-plus years.
Sixty-five.
Comprehensive plans are, are enabled under chapter 213 of the Local Government Code. And basically, that language just says that if you have a comprehensive plan, your zoning and regulations need to align to it. But I like to talk a little bit more about why these things are really important. They are an official guide to making decisions about growth and development. And it's a vision that is designed to last beyond elections and unite leadership, no matter what happens. It gives confidence to you as a city councilor and mayor that when you're making decisions, you're doing those in a way that are aligned to community desires. It gives you that confidence to know that you're getting it right. It provides your summaries of goals, your policies and strategies that tell you how to achieve the mission and focus on the future, how you work together to build strong neighborhoods and develop a strong and resilient economy that provides for a safe community. And it seems like that resilient economy is kind of front and center these days. It also allows you to form a basis for your city council strategic planning, any departmental plans. It shapes your budgets. And perhaps most importantly, it forms that policy basis for changes to zoning and development regulations in light of opportunities and challenges facing the city. So what, what do we think gives us our strength? So we have the advantage of being a multidisciplined firm with a wide range of resources at our disposal that can inform the plan and address challenges. We also are experts in working with small cities and what we call enclave cities, cities that are surrounded by another city that require a unique approach and experience. You're profoundly affected by external forces that are largely beyond your control. We are also one of the only firms recognized for both creating visionary plans and also detailed implementation through development regulations. We are leaders in writing zoning ordinances, subdivision ordinances, and everything in between. We're also known for our market responsiveness of planning. We are the go-to for cities that are experiencing redevelopment interest and levels of investment that haven't been seen previously. And we help guide these places through, through these, through that experience without losing what makes you special. Environments like this is not unusual for implementation opportunities to even emerge while the planning process is going. while the planning process is going on. We're very comfortable navigating in that space. In fact, we find it to be a common issue. We are very implementation focused. Our goal is for you to have a plan that has worn-out pages, not gathered dust. So this is an overview of the team that will be involved on this. While you'll see me regularly as the project manager and urban planner on the project, you're going to be on a first-name basis with many of these folks. We have incredible depth. We have the largest planning firm in Texas. Those outlined in green are actually located in Austin and San Marcos. And I'll add that Eliana Tully, even though she is not in Austin, all of her family is from here. She is here routinely. She also knows Rollingwood like the back of her hand as well. The team includes fellows of AICP, AICP and RLAs, meaning that we've got a broad range of highly capable professional experience. I'll also mention David Payne is our professional transportation planner. He's the general planning consultant for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. So that gives us some unique insight into those processes, funding, and regional planning activity. So this is kind of the five approaches that we think are going to shape success in Rollingwood. We begin this, of course, with public engagement. Every plan that we do is a ground-up, not a top-down approach. But we also know that engagement has changed in the last couple of months. I want to emphasize that we have Freeze and Nichols. We're an agile and well-resourced organization. And this example in Corpus Christi, we were able to shift from a full in-person event to a completely digital event in under a week. And the response we got from the city there really kind of corresponds well with a sign we spotted in your city park, that everything's going to be all right. We're going to be able to adapt and work through these issues. We like our engagement to be really interactive. But at the same time, we have a social distancing alternative for every type of in-person event. We're very accustomed and capable in those areas now, and quite frankly, enjoy it. We like these efforts to be very personable and welcoming and build trust. What we emphasize is we fit you, we don't make you fit us. And we like to go to the people where they already are, where they're most comfortable speaking their minds. We don't walk in with predetermined ideas or solutions. We look for the community to give us that direction, and then we build the framework around it. One of the methods that we like to use and that we have lined up for Rollingwood is using our MetroQuest system for engagement. You can think of this like a really strong surveying platform, but it's optimized to work on mobile devices, and it's designed to be highly interactive, getting both qualitative and quantitative data, and gets us some really good data points so that we can proceed with confidence. We also emphasize easy-to-understand deliverables. We recognize that we live in the age of Instagram tweets and soundbites, and we design our documents now with that in mind. That they should be engaging and easy for people to navigate, and they should be just visually interesting, draw people in, and make them want to read more. We want our documents to be tailored to meet your needs, and the format as well as platform need to support the way that you want to use the plan. So that can be something like a plan on a page, a poster that explains key goals and recommendations, can be a very detailed implementation matrix that establishes metrics, and it can include artistic renderings for recommended projects that you may need to be, if you're trying to create the framework for a bond issue or sales tax ballot for the funding approval. People are visual, though, and we need to provide effective imagery of what places can be. It's one thing to describe use and development and character, but it's something else to show a picture. We want that emotional connection and authentic reaction. We like to use a combination of renderings as well as photographic examples, and we especially like to pull from within the region. We like for people not just to see a picture, but be able to go and touch a place and see it for themselves and experience it with all five senses. Our plans are highly market responsive. We seek to really align land use and market needs. We know that you have a stable and productive tax base in Rollingwood, which is great because property tax tends to be more stable. But in Rollingwood, we've observed, even in light of the pandemic, that your May sales tax report saw an increase. You know, it was 21% or about $17,000. We're very curious to see how this plays out over the next couple of months. But we, in a lot of ways, admire Rollingwood for having this kind of stable tax base where you didn't have this immediate acute financial impact that many other cities experienced. But we also know that, you know, Rollingwood's not without struggles, that you look for ways to improve, maintain and improve infrastructure, and your land use and development decisions are going to be key and key to solving these issues. Think about your taxable value per linear foot of infrastructure adjacent to a property. Is it paying for itself? Why or why not? And what are those regulatory barriers or issues that might be holding it back? What do we need to do to enhance it? So this is typically a very key component for any mixed-use redevelopment, and we bring that into our experience. We also bring proven and adaptive approaches and a lot of passion. And this actually is kind of an example of the passion that I personally bring. So I think I told Ashley that, you know, woke up one night and, you know, what pops in my head? Rollingwood. And because it's got all these interesting external factors. And my way to deal with that was to pencil it out, and that resulted in a quick sketch. So we pursue cities and projects that ignite our passions and creativity, where we see leadership engaged and residents that are excited. Rollingwood seems to have kind of a target pasted on it when it comes to redevelopment pressure when we look around. And all of these are largely external. So what we want to seek to emphasize is how do you leverage and guide that so that you can shape it rather than just react to it? We watched this pattern in Austin where this phenomenon started downtown, then it went down South Congress, then South First, then South Lamar, and it's worked its way as far south as Benoit Bolinard. We are well aware that Rollingwood is actually far better situated geographically than many of these other locations, which explains a lot of the pressure that's emerged. In fact, we think it's the obvious location for this pressure to jump beyond MOPAC, especially with Silker Park being so close and that venue and its role in the regional economy. We've also seen multiple examples of older commercial developments that appear to be reaching obsolescence or just ready for their next life. And we think that mixed use probably makes mathematical sense here. We see the recent year Class A-plus office construction down near the intersection of B Cave and MOPAC. And those are really challenging topographic sites, and we've got these parking garages. That's a lot of capital-intensive development, and the math is clearly working for that to move forward. We also see opportunities further in on BK's Road. We see particularly the commercial center with Chinatown Restaurant, the Chevron, that seem really primed for this, as well as a few others. We also got really excited about Eames Creek. It seems like this great untapped opportunity for people to connect with nature. It also is a natural buffer for some of this corridor pressure you're seeing, and that can help guide that redevelopment opportunity. We also see a lot of opportunity for quality-of-life improvements with relatively little investment. With just a couple of really small moves, you could connect Rollingwood to a huge network of trail sidewalks and bike pedestrian infrastructure throughout the region. I think it could be a game changer for your residents and probably enhance your economy and business climate as well. We also see BK Road as this opportunity to do some branding and give some identity to that corridor. When I drive around and walk around Rollingwood, I see this great, high-quality place, but this corridor, it's lacking that same character, and we think that that could be an opportunity. Can use tools like tax increment reinvestment zones and other management districts to serve as conduits for funding so you don't have to place additional burdens on taxpayers. We also see a lot of residential redevelopment going on. We view that as positive because it's better than the alternative of neighborhoods that are struggling. It has its own set of compatibility challenges. We can help walk you through issues like accessory dwellings and backyard cottages and how to work with those in your environment. Updating and creating your future land use map is a core outcome of the plan. We also want to look at your baseline fiscal conditions to see how everything's going to perform. What makes us unique is we bring city management perspective in addition to planning. I actually come from a city management background, and so we better understand the links between development and the abilities for cities to perform and meet their mission to the residents. We look for opportunities for revitalization, those catalyst options, and look at your development patterns to set you up for success. And we can also help you facilitate tough conversations about defining the character and what's appropriate for you. We like to make this as welcoming environment as possible. It's actually an example from Midlothian. This was essentially a coffee table chat about where we had people coming into this coffee shop throughout the bay and just talking to them about what they saw for the future of downtown Midlothian in this case. That's not to say that we should neglect neighborhoods. Rollingwood has these great neighborhoods, and it's this great mixed architecture that we think is really interesting. And also because of some of the uses you have along the corridor, you're closer to having complete neighborhoods than many other areas. For example, you have a grocery store that is within walking distance from many residents. That is something that many cities would be very envious of. But we also, when we look at neighborhoods, we always look at neighborhoods, urban design, and economic development, and identity holistically. We don't think that you can do a comprehensive plan with a strong redevelopment emphasis without talking about all of those issues. We also help build programming for neighborhoods through what should neighborhood improvements look like? I heard reference to issues with speeding. We can talk about traffic calming methods and approaches, working with your associations, and also how to address any housing diversity needs, connectivity in open space. But again, probably our greatest strength is going to be our momentum-building implementation. And we view this kind of from a whole systems approach, looking at staff committees, resident committees, how to build upon input, and creating a decision-making culture so that things move forward. What we would actually envision in Rollingwood is something that's a lot more geared towards development regulation updates and things like that. That's probably your most significant challenge you're dealing with. But we have a number of approaches through annual reports and things like that. We also have adjusted our scope and schedule from the original proposal to better meet your needs. Our comprehensive plan as scoped now could be accomplished in six to eight months. This would require a rapid deployment system. So we could be ready to start June 1st if the contract worked out that way. If we get really fast response on receiving digital data, which based on my experience with your staff so far, I wouldn't be surprised if they were sending things back same day, getting the survey rolled out, getting the committee together early, and making some really smart use of technology for engagement, we can achieve informed consent rapidly and really move forward towards creating the plan, vision, and document. It does require bold discussions and bold decision-making. I get the impression that y'all are not a group that shies away from that, which is good news for us. Within the scope, we built an engagement package that reflects a compressed schedule of, you know, a few advisory committee meetings, survey bases, community open house. We have built inflexibility so that we can adjust to the COVID crisis as needed. We're going to build the snapshot upon your recent retail market analysis. We don't believe in reinventing wheels. You pay us for expertise, not to regurgitate what you've already heard. And we're building in your vision guiding principles, land use, and some transportation through implementation. We packaged this together at about 82,000. We understand that your budget may be a little less than that. We do think that there is a path to get there. But our goal is to deliver you the best possible plan in the most efficient manner that when it gets adopted, your first instinct is to throw a party and celebrate it. So to sum this up, we think that you're choice. We bring this national-level expertise with both regional and local understanding. We have this regular success with engagement that has always pushed our plans towards rapid implementation. We bring a strong market basis with expertise in redevelopment. And we also bring that unique set of skills that is perfect for first-time comprehensive plans. I've actually been involved with two first-time comprehensive plans in my career, which is a little bit unusual. And then this track record of implementation, and of course, our outstanding client service. Again, we are a firm focused on cities and local governments primarily, and we are excited about this opportunity to serve you. If there's any questions, I am happy to entertain them.
Great. Thank you very much, Chance, for the in-depth presentation. Counsel, do we have any? Amy?
Yes. Hey, Chance. I was just looking through the deliverables, and a question I have is, is there one of the deliverables that would include the actual code changes that we would need to make? Or is it just documents that would help us then have to go and still figure out how we'd have to redraft our code?
So what that would include, and I think I'm not sure my screen was actually sharing like I thought it was, which is really unfortunate. But what you're talking about is the diagnostic report. So what those typically take the form of is we go through and we look specifically at your ordinances and say, okay, here is what is not aligning with your plan. Here's how you fix it. Usually, if you're talking about the actual, you know, draft language of here's your new ordinance language, that's a step beyond. But usually, the diagnostic report, oftentimes, cities can handle that in-house, or they can engage us to move further with that. But we generally try to include that so that way it gets the implementation immediately rolling.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Go ahead, Wendy.
Was that presentation showing? I wasn't sure.
The presentation didn't show.
There's no presentation. But for what it's worth, we do have a copy of the full proposal that's been in our packet. So I think largely, we were able to fall along.
If you want to mail it to me, Chance, I can shoot it out to the group right now, too, so they have it as well.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chance. Wendy, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, based on a lot of work that we've done on other projects like the Parkmaster Plan, our drainage study, things that we may have already done some work on, how open are y'all to modifying the proposal and costs associated if we have parts of this that we don't need as much work on? We're a small city also, so there's that.
Sure, sure, sure. So that is something that we are comfortable with. Basically, we want to build the scope to what you want it to be, and then we price it off of that. We don't like repeating other people's work. So if there's something that you have in place that you're really happy with already, then we would simply incorporate those elements that are necessary and go on down the road.
Well, and just to be clear, Wendy, we've already explored that with Chance. He's already come down on his price and narrowed his scope. We provided him with all the plans that we've already got put together. Chance, did you see a place to narrow your scope further in costs associated?
It would really depend on specific content and what are those aspects of those plans that you think would be duplicative? I don't think that we have a lot of duplication left in the scope. If there is something that you think is, we could certainly trim that out. For example, there may be some aspects of urban design on the BK corridor that you may be comfortable with some of the prior corridor planning work that you've had. We are familiar with the Parks Plan work. So if there's aspects of that that would be informative to the cop plan and be possibly duplicating something, we want to avoid doing that, obviously.
I guess just one question for me, if it's a... Okay, Chance. We're obviously very community-driven, and one of the, probably not one of, the most important aspect of why we're undertaking this is a conversation that's been ongoing for years now in our community about preservation, I suppose, to a degree of what it means to be. preservation, I suppose, to a degree of what it means to be the Rollingwood community. As you noted in, in your presentation, we have seen a fair amount of, of, of growth and evolution through our residential corridor. You know, how do you, I guess, how do you guys, especially in this era, anticipate engaging the community through that process?
Sure. So you're, are you, so are you, are you looking towards how would we approach a specific issue of preservation? Or just simply defining what does it mean to be Rollingwood?
I guess, I guess there's going to be, there's going to be an element of both, right? It's nobody, I say nobody, I doubt many people in this community have an idea that of, of an overhaul by any stretch, right? I think more what we're looking for as a community is how do we tweak this and provide that level of framework on a go-forward basis, right? Life is, life is pretty good in Rollingwood. And I don't know that anyone's interested necessarily in turning that upside down. Much as kind of putting a framework around, around the community. Kind of giving us all a, a game plan, so to speak.
Sure. So I think our approach would be just to mainly have these community conversations and really ask the question of what do people value in Rollingwood? What do people think makes it special? And then you build that, that vision for your comprehensive plan around that and you build your recommendations around that. So, so it might just be directly asking, since you have some projects on the ground now that are, you know, major changes in your, in your residential areas, it's asking, how do people feel about it? Are they happy? Are they not happy? When they look at the older parks of Rollingwood, are they happy or not happy? What makes those special and figure out what are the pieces of each perspective that, that fit together and can form a, a uniting, a uniting vision for proceeding forward? That would, that would be our, our general approach. I can't tell you the outcome because it'll be community shaped. But we're, we're very comfortable having those hard conversations.
But, and, and I guess really what I was looking to hear is, is an emphasis on the fact that you, you're more than capable and happy to be taking community commentary and, and thoughts into, into the process. I think I can safely speak for myself and probably everyone on this dais that, that's going to be a critical factor. As we choose whether or not to engage further in, in a comprehensive development scheme.
Absolutely. Ashley, I think you should have a copy of my presentation now.
I just got it and I'm forwarding it to the council right now.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks again. Counsel, do we have any other questions for Chase and, and Freeze Nickel? All right. Well, Chase, I'm going to let you off the hot seat then, say thanks very much. And we've got another presentation up, but you know, feel free to stick around for the next hour and a half or the rest of our meeting if you still choose.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, Wendy? Wendy, you're muted.
Okay. Good thing I raised my hand. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. One of the deliverables that I'm looking at in this project is for the, the traffic. And really it, the scope is, is, it's hard to tell what you would do. But I'm wondering if there are any sort of traffic studies or if you look at like shared driveways or driveway allotment, like how? We have a, a commercial corridor on B Cave Road. And that is really what I'm interested in really diving into and understanding how we rezone and redevelop that property to make the most impact to our neighborhood, our sales tax. And just have more restaurant and retail available to residents as well as the bike and pedestrian infrastructure. But what, what sort of data do you collect to support your traffic portion of the study?
So, so what we use for that, we would actually pull from our, our Campo data. That's one of our advantages of having, being the general planning consultant for them is we have good data access. Really for, for what you're, you're talking about with that corridor. It's less data-driven and more about how do you create the regulatory framework that, that creates the opportunity for that? And the infrastructure that's necessary to support it. You talked about driveways and things like that. So we look at, you know, access management, how do you maintain access there? How do you create pedestrian connectivity in that corridor to support that? Especially coming over from, you know, say the Zooker Park area. And, and some, some aspects like that. But we can also pull in direct data from, from Campo. We have good traffic count data and a number of other data sources that we're able to tap there.
Okay. So there's not a, like new data, you're basically pulling from the Campo regional model? And the traffic studies Campo and TechStop provide to the general public?
Yes. And there's some additional data back behind that that we also have access to.
Okay. And what kind of data is that?
So it's going to be your, so we have like, you know, you've got, and I have to apologize because I'm not the transportation planner. But I would, I would really wish I could pull in David for that. But there's, there's a lot of data information where we can look at turn movements, things like that. We like to do direct observation. But we generally start with that Campo data and then figure out what's missing that we need. Also, your retail market analysis has a good bit of data in it as well. So what we're talking about is really taking it and then applying it in a very specific localized manner to inform the planning project.
And do y'all work at all with helping the city identify funding sources, grants? That sort of mechanism for actually redeveloping the project?
Yes, yes. We do have a lot of experience with funding. We have a funding specialist who actually works in the office next to me when I'm not in home, not in the home office. But yes, and we have a full database of different funding sources, different ways to approach funding, how to combine them. Things like that. We're very comfortable in that space.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else, counsel? All right, Chance. Well, appreciate all of your time. You've given us quite a bit to think about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Take care, buddy. We will move on to our second presentation, which is going to be with Pegasus. And I believe we have Sean Garretson here to speak. Is that fair?
I just promoted him to panelist. Sean, you should be able to share your camera. I can't hear you.
You're muted, Sean.
There we go.
There he is.
You can see me and, you can see me and hear me now?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mayor and, and counsel for having me be a part of your discussion today. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and pop my presentation up. You ready for that?
We're ready. Okay, it works for you.
Yes, I hope so. Okay. Can you see the presentation slide there?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Mayor, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and just jump in. Is that all right?
Yes, please.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for allowing me to be a part of this. I really appreciate the city staff spending some time with me and helping me get a good understanding of, of what you were all are looking for. Based upon that conversation and the RFP, we have a pretty good feel for the scope of this whole project. We do know that this is going to be your first comprehensive plan and update to your zoning map, focused primarily on, on B Cave. We also know that for many of you, communication within the community is a, is a priority. And I think, you know, nothing like a comprehensive plan to, to help instill some sense of communication. We're really big believers in involving the community and stakeholders early on. And that's something I know you're interested in. You know, I know there's some discussion about potentially looking at linking up Eames Creek, the Dry Creek, to Town Lake. And, you know, for, potentially for pedestrian and bike trail. I think also there is opportunity, there's some very interesting examples to look at of using that space as, as the backside of commercial. Almost as if it's your, your own San Antonio Riverwalk. And, and then I also know that understanding the fiscal impacts of all of these land use decisions are, are really important for you. And, you know, normally in this presentation, I would jump right into talking about Pegasus and who we are. But, you know, honestly, we are a specialist where land use and economic development meet. And so, you know, we are definitely proposing to do fiscal analysis on this project and I'll talk more about that later. But just wanted to show you just very quickly, we, it doesn't take a lot of time to, you know, look at this data. But we've compared Rollingwood, Westlake, Lakeway and B Cave on your property tax revenue and sales tax revenue for 2019. So you can see how much the quantity as well as the relative ratio comparisons. When you look at it from a pie chart perspective, it's very interesting. Rollingwood and Lakeway are almost identical in terms of your share of about seventy percent property tax revenue to thirty percent sales tax. That's just the identical opposite of Westlake that has almost seventy percent sales tax and thirty percent property tax. B Cave is an anomaly. You know, they, they have a lot of sales tax revenue and they've, they've let go of a lot of their property tax rates in that area. When you look at the sales tax per capita, you can see how Rollingwood compares to some of the other cities. Rollingwood has about six hundred and fifty per capita sales tax revenue. You compare that to Lake, to Westlake, it's around a thousand. And then Lakeway is really low, almost two hundred and fifty, and then B Cave, of course, is through the roof. So with that being said, you know, we, we are an urban planning firm. So we do everything from small-scale site plans, downtown plans, citywide comprehensive plans, regional plans. We, we do land use analysis and planning and we do a lot of economic development analysis. Most of our clients are public sector clients, although we do have some private sector clients where we do market analysis and feasibility studies. We also do land development. And we, what's interesting is I find that our work in land development makes us much smarter in terms of our planning work. We are not a planning firm that, you know, kind of sits in an ivory tower and, and writes plans that aren't necessarily based on reality. Our, our projects are based on whether or not things work in, in real life. So, you know, we do believe that we have a real strong competitive advantage here on this project. We, you know, have a lot of years of experience managing small and large scale projects. Again, you know, we're, we're, we're experts in that fiscal analysis and economic development where we think this is such a critical role, critical aspect of this project for you. We are based in Austin, very familiar with Rollingwood. Interestingly, I haven't thought about this in a while, but the first comprehensive plan I ever wrote was for the city of Buta. In an office in the city of Rollingwood. I used to work at Loomis Austin, right at Walsh Tarleton in B Cave, Catty Corner from McDonald's right there. And I also do a lot of swimming. So occasionally I will show up at the master's swim practice at Rollingwood. But then I quickly realized that they're much quicker than I am. So I don't do that too often. But we are very creative, super nimble and cost-effective. You know, we're proposing a six-month project for sixty thousand dollars. And, and I, I hold true to that we can hold to that timeline and that budget. You have both my resume and the resume of my project manager Kathy. So I'm not going to talk that much about it. I just wanted to say that I have not stretched the truth in any of this presentation except for this picture. Because I've realized there's not one white hair in that photo. So I'll have to modify that. Kathy is a project manager extraordinaire. You will all come, come, come to get to know her. Carrie in particular, she will be working a lot with you on meeting logistics. She does a lot of our analysis as well. We also have other folks that help with any aspect that we may need, whether or not it's from transportation side of things, landscape architect side of things, architect as well. So I would like you guys, I'm going to take just a quick exercise. I would like everybody to pull out your cell phone and go to this website, www.minty.com. And there's a, a question I want you to ask with only one word. You'll see at the top of the, you'll see at the top of that, there is, at the top of that website, there's a for code area. Do you guys see that? And I am, I'm going to share a different screen with you here. Do you see this? Do you see the website?
Yes.
Okay. Now, has everybody, do you see the core, the code at the top, seven four, seven four, four two?
Yes.
So go ahead and pull out your cell phones, go to that website, enter that code and then enter one word that you would describe your vision for Rollingwood through this effort. Everybody, if you may. Is anybody taking that yet? There we go. So we should have at least, what, five, five words? Here we go. A couple more of you? Okay.
I hope everyone's spell checking.
Okay. Well, I think, good, cohesive, community and balance. So you can see at the bottom, six people have responded. So four people have already said community is their, is the word that they see as aspirational. So let me go ahead and stop sharing that and go back to the other screen. Okay. Are you guys all able to see the scope of work overview now on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this, I'm going to, this closely follows, this presentation closely follows our proposal. We have five phases of this project. The first phase is really kind of a critical phase and it's a short phase, but it's finalizing the contracts, the scope of work, schedule and the, a very specific community input process down to finalizing dates, et cetera. The second phase is really, I call it kind of the drinking from the fire hose phase where we're just, you know, gathering input from community, business stakeholders. We're going to start, we're going to analyze, do our first fiscal analysis of your current zoning code. And we're big believers in, don't just have a public meeting, to have a public meeting and ask people what they want. You have to look at that as an opportunity to educate the community about some of the issues. And I think maybe the fiscal health might be something that should be the priority for that in this, in the, in that discussion. And give them something to react to. I find like that, I find that that is a much more genuine form of public participation. The third phase is really where we're going to start writing the, the future land use map and doing a fiscal analysis of some scenarios. And what I'm proposing is two different scenarios of, you know, mostly on B Cave Road. Looking at, you know, different levels of, of density and, and scale. And compare those two with the current, future, the current zoning code. I think all three of those together would be a really telling conversation for folks to have. And ultimately would help the city council and the planning commission make some decisions. So that fourth phase is just that consensus, you know, getting to an adoption of the comprehensive plan and the flum. Taking the planning commission and, you know, facilitating their recommendation to city council. And going through two readings of that and adoption. And then the last phase is, is the land development code modification. So clearly this is a, going to be a very different type of social engagement, community engagement than we have in other projects. Simply because it's very possible if we do a six-month project that takes us through November, it is possible that we might not have. have any in-person meetings. We're planning on that, and we're prepared for that. And if we can have open meetings and town hall meetings later on, I think that that's great. But I will say that it's very simple for us to put together, you know, a bunch of neighborhood town hall meetings where we're, you know, maybe meeting with maybe 20 people at a time, or we can do a much larger, kind of a town hall type of a discussion. There's a lot of ways to get at providing feedback, or getting feedback from the community during this kind of time. So this project schedule is just a snapshot of what I've already described, but I wanted you to look at two things. So one, the green blocks are the time during each phase. So Phase One, for example, is just two weeks, you can see how that carries out. The other thing I wanted to point out is, at the end of each phase, we have what deliverables you can expect at the end of each of those phases. So at the end of Phase One, we'll have the final contract, a finalized scope of work, a specific project schedule. After the second phase, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation, a memo to the council summarizing the community input and the fiscal analysis of the current future land use map or zoning code. And then Phase Three, PowerPoint presentation to planning commission, a draft of the comp plan, and then presented to council and planning commission. And Phase Four is the final comprehensive plan and the flum, and presentations to take that through adoption. The last phase is the actual land development code rewrite itself. So I want to just say one other thing on this schedule. So I've written comprehensive plans and I've been involved in a lot of comprehensive plans. And as I mentioned to Carrie, I really do believe that the projects that last 12 months are too long, and, you know, the, everybody loses their momentum and their steam. And, you know, when it comes down to writing a final plan, it becomes a super editor process. I'm a big believer in, you know, the citizens elect the council, the council appoints the planning commission, and, you know, we definitely have to provide opportunities for the community, especially early on, to give their input, and then before adoption, definitely. But this timeline is based on the assumption that you all believe in that same mantra as I do, in terms of, you know, let's have a really thoughtful community engagement to move through that. But this is definitely focused on moving towards a relatively quick adoption. And the land development code, to have only five weeks to write that, might sound like a stretch. If you've been following the city of Austin's land development code rewrite, you know, I was very, very engaged early on in version one. And then, you know, here we are, I think, five years, four years later, and they still haven't adopted it. It's just, it doesn't need to happen like that. So I wanted to just point that part out of the scope as well. So, you know, I'm not going to talk that much about projects, but I did want to just mention, this was the first comprehensive plan we ever wrote, and that was for the city of Buta, and we wrote their first comprehensive plan, their land development code, their capital improvement plan, and budget, their utility plan, their transportation plan, and their economic development strategy. We kind of set them up pretty well. That was well before Cabela's and everything else happened, and they've done a very good job implementing that. The next, this project is one that's down in the El Paso area, a city of about 30,000. We also did a fiscal analysis of comprehensive plan there, and then they had a 64-acre vacant tract that we wrote a transitory and development zoning code for, and wrote the whole entire land development code for them as well. Lakeway was another recent client of ours, again, it was a comprehensive plan, did the fiscal analysis for that as well, and, you know, that was an interesting project. You know, my mom lives in Lakeway, and, you know, in some ways, they're very similar to Rollingwood in terms of how they were initially created. And, you know, they're, they have some major issues out there, and, you know, I mean, I think you guys are very different in terms of your proximity to Austin and the opportunities you have for commercial right now. The last two projects are just some other smaller examples. This is a two-block downtown plan we did for the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma. I definitely made sure to wear my Longhorn shirts when I went into cavalry country. And then Meridian, Idaho, which is a suburb of Boise, but fastest-growing city under 100,000 in the United States. We did a lot there from downtown plan, multifamily feasibility study, economic development strategy as well. So with that, I want to pause. I know you've already spent a lot of time, and I just want to say, again, thank you for this opportunity. I do believe that, given what you're looking for and what you need and what we are good at, it is a good fit. But with that, I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks a lot, Sean. I'll open it up to the dais for any questions, if you guys just want to raise your hand. Amy, you were fast, just on the trigger. You're up.
Thanks. Thanks for your presentation. One clarification I wanted to get is, in the deliverables that we would get, you're saying land code. So would it be a land code that we would be able to adopt, that document that we would receive as-is, or would we, it still be required to then get further analyzed and put into our existing code?
You know, my assumption is that it's the whole, it's a whole zoning code, and it's mostly focused on commercial. There may be, and I'm not coming with, you know, any assumptions, but there may be some aspects of the residential code to take a look at. Carrie's mentioned accessory dwelling units, might be something that we have to look at as well. But my intention, Amy, is that when we bring it to council for adoption, it's complete. It's not, you're not going to have to, need to do anything else after that.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Any other questions, council? Okay, Wendy?
Unmute myself this time. So, looking through the presentation and deliverables that you have given us here, you mentioned some other work that you've done for other cities, and the deliverables of like a transportation plan. Now, we're obviously not a city like, that has a lot of regional roads running through it, we have one main corridor, but I am concerned about that corridor and the development of the corridor, and making sure that we have the ingress and egress right. And is that something that is just not on the scope of what you're getting, or something that we can add to the scope of what you all have given us?
It is something that we can add to the scope, if that's, if that's important for you. I think there's a lot of what you're talking about, I think that we can address in just the overall aspects of a comprehensive plan, but we're definitely not proposing any engineering in our current scope. But Wendy, that's something that we can do if that's, if that's, if that's something you're interested in.
I just, I thought, just thinking about a comprehensive plan that I've seen other cities have, that the traffic, transportation plan is a big part of having a comprehensive plan and a corridor. So I do think that that's something that's worth exploring. And, you know, just looking at how other cities that are situated similarly, that are surrounded by, we're a unique situation, but, you know, that is our one corridor, and we're really looking to improve the road and the connectivity and the bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and as well as work with our regional planners to make sure that we can improve those roads, and that we have some kind of plan for how we want the ingress and egress into the city to work as a, an urban location where people can get around and move and use our commercial district.
Sure. You know, what I will say, I'm sorry, Wendy, I thought you were, go ahead.
I do have one more question for you, but I'll let you respond to that, and then I have one more question.
Okay. I will just say this, though. You know, we can, when we're going through and finalizing our scope and budget, it's very easy for us to add that as a potential additional services, but what I would, I would propose and suggest is that, you know, let us have some conversations with Tech Dot and Campo, and understand what we're dealing with, you know, before we go out and hire and bring on a transportation planner. So I'm saying that we can, we can address whatever is going to come up, but that is something that I would do in the course of comprehensive plan anyway, is to reach out to those stakeholders.
Great. And then my other question, I asked for the other person who interviewed as well, but just, how are you going to, are you going to look at the other studies that we've had done, like the 2001 or 1999 major corridor study, the Retail Coach study? It seems though you're focusing more on the commercial than the park and the residential, which I think is a good focus for this project. But, you know, the trails and the connectivity in the park system are a big part of our commercial district if we can have some sort of connectivity with our residents and cities. So I do think that, looking at that system, at least in the park system and the trail system, is important.
Absolutely. And, you know, Wendy, I should say too, I mean, it probably would have been helpful if I showed you an example, table of contents of a comprehensive plan. It sounds like you've already looked at a couple of them. So your comprehensive plan will have a component of land use, housing, transportation, economic development, parks and recreation. It has to, because it is, it's a visioning and a driving document, guiding document for all of you guys. So we might not get into a very intense level of detail, as an example, on transportation as land use, but when I'm approaching this project and looking at it, I'm looking at it holistically. And so on the side of the parks and the trails, you know, I just got back from Mewshu Bend State Park, I've been mountain biking there for the last three days, so I tried not to get too sunburned for this presentation, that would have been a disaster, right? But myself, all of my friends, we bike all the time, we know the importance of connectivity, that particular area. Like, I've actually tried to ride my bike, and I've only done it once, coming from Town Lake up to the Rollingwood Pool, and that hill's a killer. It would be real nice to have a separate trail that goes along the creek and then maybe up the other way. So I think there's going to be other things that the community brings up that we can't even identify right now, and all of that, all of that is going to get funneled into the comprehensive plan. So I want to just stress, it will be holistic. And if there is a finer-grain level of detail that Rollingwood wants, either in the beginning of the project or in the course of the project, we can address that, we can make that happen.
We want a lot, but we also want to be fiscally conservative in our budget, and so I would be worried about having add-ons as we go and not really knowing what upfront the cost is going to be, because it's not in the scope. So is that going to be an additional benefit, I mean, cost to us down the road is something that I'd want to know upfront.
Yeah. Well, I think, so basically, the budget that I proposed, $60,000 for six-month project, includes everything that is in our proposal, and it addresses everything that I believe is in your RFP, and then I've heard from staff. So I'm not, I'm not telling you right now, I'm already starting to add additional services, but you bring up transportation, and I'm just saying, if there is a finer, if you need an engineer for something that we're going to need to do, we are going to have to charge additional services for that. Now, what I'd suggest, though, is that, because Wendy, I totally agree with you, and believe me, I've never heard that before from a city, that you want a lot with a little bit of money. But that's your job, I know you need to be being fiscally conservative, but what I would suggest is that, you know, the city really agree on exactly all the other aspects of a comprehensive plan that you want done before this project gets contracted. I think that that's going to be pretty important, because that way, if there are, for example, other things that you want that aren't currently in our proposal, we can address it upfront, we can put that into the budget, and it's set. I personally am not a big fan of having the additional services. I have to have that in there as a consultant, just in case, you know, something were to happen, or something came up during the project that we needed to address, but I understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Do we have any other thoughts or questions, council? All right, Gavin, I wasn't sure if that was just getting yourself going or making a move to the mic.
Just getting ready for the next phase here.
You got it.
Oh, I thought for sure that was a, I thought for sure the blinking was some sort of a secret Rollingwood council sign.
That's a secret sign.
With that, if there's no other conversation or questions for Sean, council, I'm going to go ahead and let him get back to the rest of his day.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck in your deliberations, I'll look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Sean, I appreciate your time, stay safe.
You too, bye-bye.
All right. Council, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Move past the consent agenda.
Motion from Gavin. I think Sarah might have won that, just by a nose. Discussion, all in favor? Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, item six, discussion and possible action on the easement encroachment license agreement and the city of Rollingwood access easement agreement with William and Teton at 301 Inwood Road. Just for context, guys, the Teton provided the variance some number of months ago, it was contingent on final agreement, and I will let Amber provide a little bit of context on how we got to a final agreement that embodies what the BOA and city and Teton's all need.
Correct. So in February of 2019, and went before the BOA, they approved, they were requesting a variance from the fence closer than 15 feet from the curb, and then the fence in the right-of-way. And so these documents provide the Teton the ability to occupy the right-of-way, and they also provide us an access easement, which we did not have before, to a drainage facility that we constructed on their property, probably about four years ago. So these memorialize those agreements, and I'm happy to have them finally across the finish line.
Okay, with that, council, do we have a motion? Wendy, you have a question? Hand raised, go for it.
I have a couple of questions. Just reading through this, and y'all probably have thought through all of this, but since this is an agreement between the city and between these individuals, how will the easement be conveyed to new owners in the event the property sells? Because I didn't see any conveyance in there that, like, to make sure that it's properly maintained if the property sells, it's with these people and not with the property. Charlie, do you want to speak to that? Do them.
No, because I'm not, I wasn't ready for the question. I mean, I heard the question, but I have to go look at the document. Did y'all hear me?
Okay, well, that'd be a question I have, is, you know, if we want to make sure that the structure is maintained, and we hope that those neighbors don't move, but since it is an agreement with neighbors and not a specific property, like, will it carry along with the property, and the new owners be required to maintain it? The access easements, no, the easement of the, what happens with the fence that they built, they have to keep it in good maintenance and order, repair? And that's their end of the deal, and they, you know, that's what they have to do. If we were to take away their easement, we'd owe them $10,000 because of the investment that they put in of the infrastructure there, but they're also required to maintain that infrastructure. So what happens if they then sell the property? How does this easement convey to the new owners of the property? And then separate these people from this easement agreement? And then separate these people from, from this easement agreement? All right. There may not be an answer to that, but that's a question that I have. I think that we need to get sorted out. And then I'm just wondering if, if there's been any movement on with the property owners on the other side of the road with the easement where the water already conveys over there?
I don't know if we can discuss that since it's not on the agenda, but I have an update for you if we can talk online or offline.
Okay. And then, and my last question is in filing these easement records, are they going to be filed then with Travis County and available to the public through the Travis County search feature on the public record?
I don't know about the search feature, but they'll be filed, they'll be filed at the property records.
Okay. So they will be part of the property record and like the deed history so that you can see where the easement is. Okay. That's great.
Does that answer your first question?
No.
Okay.
Wendy's first question is whether this, this commitment runs with the land or with the individuals.
Right. Well, I understand the first question, but it's, this is a weird, this is a weird deal that we ended up doing. The easement, of course, the access easement agreement is going to run with the land. It's filed at the property, with the property records and it's going to run with the land. And, and so whoever any success or interest is, is going to be subject to allowing us to have our access easement. The question though seemed to me to be more about the fence and their obligations to maintain that fence if, if the, if the property is sold. And that's in the encroachment and license agreement. And I just couldn't remember if, if we were filing that in the property records and whether or not that ran with the land as well. And that's just one thing I need to look at.
I believe we are, Charlie.
Yeah, it looks like we are. I just couldn't remember. It's been a while since I looked at this.
This truly has dragged on so long. It's, and I'm sure we talked about it. I mean, I think it's great that we have the access easement.
Here's, here's how it works. So the, there's an assignment provision within the agreement. If, and they can assign the agreement to any future property owner. If they don't assign it, they're still on the hook for the maintenance of that property, even if they sell the property. So either way, we'll have someone who would be responsible for it, either them because they failed to assign it and they still have the agreement with us, or the new property owner.
Is there a way within the agreement to ensure that they assign it to the new property owners when they convey the property?
No. We, there's not a, it's not possible to do that within that type of agreement.
If it's filed, it'll show up on their title.
Yeah, it'll, and that's, this, this will show up, that, that's, thank you very much. This will show up on their title and quite honestly, the property owners will have a hard time getting their loan and papers cleared up because a title company is not going to want to ensure this issue. This is not an unusual, this is not an unusual way of handling things. This is pretty, this is a pretty common way of handling.
Okay. As long as that issue is addressed and we don't end up with a fence that's falling apart because nobody ever took ownership of it, I think it's okay.
Yeah, Wendy, under general provisions, it says that it's, it's binding upon the parties heretofore, successors and assigns.
Okay.
So if they sell the party or the property to a third party, it's binding on that third party.
Great. That answers my question then.
Sorry, I had to go back and read. I looked at it.
I'll move to approve the easement encroachment license between the city of Rollingwood and William and Sarah Teton at 301 Inwood Road.
Second.
A motion in a second. Discussion, counsel? Sarah?
Yeah. Can someone explain the $10,000 reimbursement in the termination section? I'm having trouble seeing why we would.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I can, I can, I can explain that. They're giving us an easement, an access easement. If there wasn't consideration for that access easement, then there's your answer. And what they're suggesting is it's a, you can't pull our license. If you pull the license, you owe us 10 grand for putting up the fence in exchange for the access easement. So they're not.
But it didn't sound to me like it was for pulling the, the license. It sounded like if we had to, if we had to do something that damaged their fence, because, I mean, it's, is in our right of way, that it sounded like that. And not being a lawyer, maybe I'm misreading that, but it sounded like that was for repair of the fence if we have to do something that damages it in order to access whatever. I mean, we've got other water projects that are, are drainage projects that are scheduled for right there.
So Sarah, respectfully, it, it says, if the city terminates this agreement pursuant to the section 6B, prior to the expiration of the initial term, then the access easement and all rights and privileges granted shall automatically terminate as of this date and without any further action of the parties, the city shall promptly pay licensee $10,000 to reimburse licensee for the costs incurred in connection. So basically it's, if we changed our mind and terminated this agreement tomorrow, we accepted this agreement and then they built the fence and then we terminated, we would, we would owe them for the cost of, of the fence and terminate the easement. I think it's.
It's a central consideration for the easement. Call it what you want. Call it, what they see it as is reimbursement for their expenses associated with the fence, but the fact of the matter is the consideration for this access easement is allowing them to put up a fence. If, if we weren't allowing them to put up a fence, we would have to pay them money for this access easement. And so you can call it as, it's just a, it's an arms length transaction on the value of the access easement and if we were to terminate their right to have a fence.
It's, it's, it's.
Or we could, or we could not, not maintain it and they could have a lake in their backyard again. It's, it's like to their benefit that we maintain that. So.
And it's, and it's to the community's benefit that they didn't put a fence across, across that drainage area as well. So it's, it's a situation, like it's, Sarah, to sum it up, it's a bunch of attorneys keeping each other honest is what it boils down to. It'll be, it'll be a non-issue. And then you can call me out publicly if, if I'm wrong there.
Okay. Is the motion on the license agreement? Or the, are we going to approve both of these or just one?
I said the approved, the easement encroachment license between the city of Rollingwood and the city, oh, I guess that, you know, I need to amend the motion because I didn't say and the city of Rollingwood access easement agreement. So that actually I did not say that. Yeah. But I would amend my motion to include that if, if needed.
Second.
All right. We have that motion in a second. Any additional conversation or questions, counsel? Did we lose Amy? Yeah, there she is.
There she is.
Yeah, Amy's back. Amy, do you have any questions before I ask for the vote on the motion? Comments? All set? All right. In that case, Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
And Amy?
Aye.
All right. The motion carries. Amber and Charlie, thanks for all the time you guys spent getting that thing done. Amber especially. Moving on to item seven, discussion of the rezoning of 503 Vale Street from residential to government and institutional. Okay, we've got docs there. Guys, this is a follow-up to the conversation about getting 503 Vale, as we discussed last month, getting it under contract. We are currently under contract officially as of yesterday on the home. We have 60 days. I believe that 60 days starts tolling as of yesterday. We have done, my, when I say we, I know members of the council have reached out to a number of folks as well. Obviously, letters, notice was sent out from City Hall to all residents here in town. You'll see in your packet that you, we have been provided a couple of emails and kind of an accounting from City Hall. We have only had four that have come down on either side, one side of the fence or the other, two in support and two in opposition. And then we have had seven requests to take a look at the documentation. At this point, I've talked to the better part of, gosh, I don't even, I'll be honest with you, I don't even know how many folks at this, at this point, north of 50. The vast majority of folks are either positive or neutral. I have had right now a count of four that are either opposed or strongly opposed. I've asked those four, well, let's say I've asked, I've had conversations with those four as to kind of what their thoughts are. And in large part, I can be summed up, the two primary concerns, which all their concerns are valid without question, but the two primary concerns are increased traffic and a potential decrease in, in their perceived property value. There have been, I guess, kind of subsequent conversations about, you know, they don't want that element on this side of town, that, that element being a government building. But, you know, in, in large part, it's a, it has been largely positive, but the folks that have been opposed specifically with two do live in close proximity. One of the opposed lives on Park Hills and another several blocks away on Rollingwood near Almerian. Just for context there, guys, Charlie has provided us with some support as far as what we would need to do to go through this process. There's a survey in your packet. One of the other items that we have done, we reached out to the folks at Stanley, who've been great with conversation and asked them to, to throw together some conceptualizations. Oh, sorry, that's another big aspect of the folks, folks' concern is to the, the visual aesthetic of the building. Apologize, I don't know how I glossed over that. That was probably the single, the single biggest after concern on property value. But the aesthetic was, the question surrounding the aesthetic is whether or not we intend to keep it as a, you know, a pink stucco building or whether it's envisioned as a pink stucco building, whether it's envisioned as a, as a three-story structure, a single-story structure or something in between. In any case, in short, what was provided very late in the day today, but in truth, in a very expeditious manner from the folks at Stanley and very graciously to us is some watercolor renderings. Those were the result of a conversation, a brief conversation that I had with, with their team regarding kind of what the aesthetic of Rollingwood is, what, what we generally feel is important. An emphasis there was discussion on foliage landscaping, making sure that whatever structure was simpatico with, not just with the landscaping, but with structures around. The idea of not dropping a stereotypical or God forbid, a, you know, a communist era style municipal building in, in a nice residential part of town. What we have, as I mentioned, it should be in your inbox and for anybody in the public, it is available for you to take a look at as well. That has been, let's see, sorry, it was provided a little bit this afternoon, a little bit earlier this afternoon. And a couple of ideas that we really wanted to emphasize were, you know, around natural materials, right? So yet the concepts of limestone and timber, steel and glass, these are also elements that as we underwent our, our branding efforts, the discussion was, you know, I don't know if anybody remembers all the way back to kind of those visual cues that we provided, but those are the elements that people most associated themselves with here in town. So some of the new structures that were contemplated in this, you know, potential use of, of existing foundation in subgrade in order to save on cost, some kind of shaded community patio and lawn ready for access from Vale, again, to kind of keep it more in line with this, you know, the open yard space that, that we're accustomed to seeing with our setbacks from the street. You know, a, not just a shaded parking area at the back, but also locating the parking and kind of maybe the less aesthetically pleasing aspects of a building on the blind side for our community. So kind of facing that, that, you know, for lack of a better term, silver clubhouse road. And a couple of other items, we wanted to make sure that this, the idea and discussion was, make sure the structure isn't so imposing, certainly a little bit welcoming from the outside and just a generally warm and kind of a community open type aesthetic. In any case, that, you should have that picture or that concrete rendering. Want to be very clear that that is a potential concept. All right. So any future, future movement on this, but obviously I'd highly encourage, and I think you guys would all agree, that community involvement would be a, a critical port, a portion of going forward. Any case, that's everything you have for me, counsel. Do you have thoughts, comments, questions? Amber, go ahead.
We have someone, Larry Hauser, who has his hand raised. Would you like to recognize him?
Can I say something first?
Sure. Go ahead, Wendy. And then, and then Dr. Hauser.
Okay. I just wanted to update the council on what I've talked to residents about. I've, I've gone through and I've talked to about 27 people, trying to just get a list of all of the most immediately affected neighbors in the neighborhood in the area of this proposed zoning change. And so I have some general feedback from neighbors and then I have a feel for how those neighbors are feeling and a general idea of what's going on. And I have had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Hauser too, and he's a wonderful, very And I have had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Hauser too, and he's a wonderful, very articulate man. So I'm sure I'll let him speak for himself when it's his turn next. But one of the things that I've heard from neighbors is, you know, they, they just want to be a part of this process. They're going to want more information as we go along. I think this has all moved really quickly and we haven't had time to meet as a council. And we cannot meet outside of open meetings because of the Open Meetings Act. So it's not like we are able to sit down and talk to one another about what this might look like, the ideas that we have for the property, whether or not we're going to do it, because we don't do that sort of thing outside of an open meeting. This is our opportunity to start talking about these things. So this is the first time we've seen these renderings together. This is something that just came out. So conceptually, this I know is something that Mayor Dyson has worked to get fairly quickly just to give people an idea of what it would look like. So that as we explore this opportunity, we have something to show as a picture. But this absolutely isn't what it's going to look like. This isn't the architectural firm that we've engaged. I know that, that Mayor Dyson worked hard on getting them to get this to us quickly. But one of the things that the neighbors that I've talked to would like to see is the ingress and egress be on the Silver Clubhouse Road as opposed to it be on Vale or on Rollingwood Drive. So, you know, we'll have to explore those different scenarios once we decide whether or not we're going to go through this. You know, as, as we get more experts involved and see what really the, we can't make promises because we don't know with the slope of the property, with the, the trees over there, really what that looks like. But I think that we're, we're going to explore all of these opportunities and then try to communicate with the public through these different meetings that we're having. And this is a beginning of the process. We're going to have several public hearings on this. This is a, our first opportunity to talk about it today with the renderings. Then we'll also have the Publicized Planning and Zoning Meeting that's coming up in June and then also the City Council Meeting. And I have talked to residents and I wanted to emphasize just on the record that although we are looking at an agenda item today of taking out tax notes that we could use toward the purchase of this property, that we are going through this zoning process and that those tax notes, should we not choose to move forward with purchasing this property, can be used toward infrastructure improvement projects that we have on our long list. So it's important to know that even though today we may have that on the agenda and we may move forward with purchasing or selling the tax notes, that it doesn't lock us into anything. And it also, this is something that we want community feedback about. We, we're going to start getting more feedback in. I've reached out to people in the immediate area and I think that the overall sentiment is they don't want a big industrial building there. They don't want a jail, which we can't have a jail anyhow. We're a small city, we can't hire jailers. Any small city like us uses the county jail. So if some, if a police officer in Rollingwood arrests somebody, they take them to Travis County Jail and they have a booking procedure, they can hold them there. We cannot hold people, nor do we want to hold people in our residential neighborhoods. So that isn't something that we would have at all as an issue. But overall, I have talked to all of the surrounding neighbors. I did not have a chance to talk to Mrs. Wheeler, who is directly across the street. But Mayor Dyson did talk to her before she left. She's, she's elderly and lives alone, so she is now staying at her daughter's ranch with the coronavirus issues going around. But she was concerned in.
I don't mean to interrupt, just, just a point to clarify. I responded to an email from Ms. Wheeler, but I, I didn't have an opportunity to speak with her. I invited, I invited the conversation, but no doubt that's been sidelined for.
No doubt.
Well, yeah, pandemic concerns, I'm sure. Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem, thank you for clarifying that because I, I hadn't talked to her. I had tried to get ahold of her and couldn't and then was ready to go do a well check. But she is, according to Shanti, she's safe, happy and healthy, so we are all happy to hear that. The first people that we did reach out to are the probably most affected people, the closest proximity, which are the next door neighbors of the Timmermans. And they are in support, they like the idea of having the police presence close. Rightly so, they have questions about impacts, look, look and feel, the logistics of it all, and they're going to remain engaged. But overall, they're very supportive and they like having the police presence there when we do stage police there for the many, many public events that we have going on in the area. And we also have directly across the street, the Grams, and they are ambivalent about this basically, but they just want to get more information, they want to continue to understand what is being proposed and they're going to continue to follow the, the information. Next door to the, oh, next door to them are the Sparks. I haven't had a chance to speak with them personally. I know that they were in New Orleans for their daughter's college graduation. Sort of COVID graduation from college over there. So I know that Mayor Dyson had a chance to talk with Grant Sparks. And I understand that he was in support, but also wanting more information. Is that correct?
I think he changed that to opposed.
Opposed, okay. Well, you know, as this evolves, we're going to get more information and people are, you know, there's, there's not a vote and then you're locked in. So that's, that's something that should be noted. I also talked to the Perrises who are next door to the Timmermans. So they're just one door down and they're in support of it. They, they have two young children, they're hoping that it will help with the speeding and also just the, the safety of the Greenbelt area. I won't go through my whole list of everybody that I spoke with, but I, I have so far 14 people that I've spoke to are in support. Well, I'll go with 13 now that the Sparks, I didn't speak to the Sparks, but they were online as a possible supporter. So 13 in support, seven are neutral. Many of the neutral people that I've spoken with, they like the idea, but they also respect their neighbors and the neighbor feelings about the development of the property. And they, they want to support their neighbors, but they also don't oppose the development. So they're trying to remain neutral in that. We'll go with adding the Sparks, that there's four against. The against is again, Mrs. Wheeler, who's across the street. I haven't had a chance to speak with her. My registered Dr. Hauser as being against it. Cindy and Ed Lee, who live down the street, they're not strongly against the use of it as a police station, but they would prefer it to remain residential if that is an option because they, they would just prefer residential stay there. And then I'm not sure what the, the status of is of Grant Sparks and, and what his concerns may be. But that is where I am so far. That is most of the surrounding neighborhood going out to about 1,000 feet away from the property. A couple of people I haven't been able to get ahold of, but for the most part, I've talked to, to the people surrounding. So I think it's important that we, as we go through this process, that we remember to talk with each other and put everything that we can on the public record when we're meeting because we are all working separately and talking to different people. And so I'm going to be working to, to make sure that I'm able to share the things I learn at our meetings when we meet publicly. So I hope y'all will do the same.
Deal. Thank you. Thank you Wendy. Amber, do we still have, do we still have Dr. Hauser with us?
We do, and he still has his hand raised. After Hauser, I'm going to unmute your mic, lower your hand. Now have the floor and can unmute yourself. Looks like you're still on mute, Dr. Hauser. Okay, there you are. Yes.
Yes, thank you very much for allowing me to speak and take up your time. And thank you Wendy and Michael for spending time talking with me. I've, I've been here 26 years. We're at 2404 Rollingwood, so we're right across the street from the Pink House. And many of us around where I live, on either side of me, actually just found out about this just a few weeks ago. So we're just now trying to get up to speed on all the work that y'all have obviously put into this. I, I have worked with law enforcement since 1985. I've, I've spoke to y'all before when Harmony House was trying to come in. I was a Travis County Jail psychiatrist for 17 years and I worked with APD, Travis County Sheriffs. I love Rollingwood Police, I have the utmost respect for them. They do a fabulous job and in fact, the City Council and the mayor and the police all do an amazing job in this neighborhood. Rollingwood is a jewel in Austin and is very unique in the way that it's set up. I want the best that we can get for our police. And I'm hoping that with the money that y'all are thinking about spending to buy this piece of property, rezone it, restructure the structure that's already there, could be used and maybe even less of that to make a really nice police station over at City Hall or down towards the other end of B Caves where there's commercial development. The problem for us is that we and, and our neighbors, the Sims, the Lindells, the Morrows, the Brightmans down on, on Vale, we all feel like we bought our property in a neighborhood that is residential. And, and, and the property at 503 Vale is zoned as residential. And I understand, and I want to also go on record as thanking Gary Keller for buying that piece of property from Harmony House because that, that was a potential disaster in my mind for them to be there. But in the spirit of things, we do not want to have a non-residential piece of property across the street from our house. Whether it is a governmental, institutional or commercial development, we would like to continue to live in a neighborhood that is residential. A, a police station or, and I understand this is going to be an annex from what I understand from the application, is, is a 24/7 operation. And I know that there's not a lot of traffic, but it, it is something that's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so it will increase traffic. It will affect the value of our properties in this area. And this part of Rollingwood is very unique and in terms of, we have a lot of, of land. We have the parks, the access to Silver Park, which is, which is just very nice and aesthetically very beautiful. And as you drive into the entrance of Rollingwood with our Rollingwood sign, I, I just don't see driving into a police station. And I know that you have the ability to make it, you know, non-visible, but it's still rezoning a residential piece of property that is going to create, you know, a different dynamic at this part of town. I think people who have bought their property on Rollingwood Drive towards B Caves or on Nixon across from City Hall had done so, knowing that they are buying a piece of property across from a, a zoned area of town that's going to have groups of people. You've got the swimming pool, the baseball field, City Hall, the park, all wonderful. It would seem like in an area the size of Rollingwood, which is what, less than a square mile, we could put our police very nicely over there. And, you know, do we really need two police stations in a small, one square mile piece of land? And it would seem more efficient for us, and again, we don't know the details of all the work y'all have done in looking in to taxes and, and property issues. But it would seem like for less than $1.2 million and a lot of money to restructure this, this house, that something very nice could be built for the police in a place that's already commercially zoned and not have to rezone a beautiful part of this neighborhood that's been this way for, for a long period of time. We're also concerned about project creep, that once you start with this, what's, what's to stop doing more? And also encouraging the people on, on this side of the street to, to try to develop or rezone their property for a different use than residential, if that's already being started down at this. And, you know, that could get us into just a lot of uncomfortable situations. And as I've talked to the mayor, you know, really anybody in the neighborhood could sell their house to a Harmony House-like place and get an exemption and put something up that would be uncomfortable for, for I think most people. So we, we strongly oppose having this piece of property rezoned. Our neighbors on either side of us are feeling the same way, at least from what they've said to me. And we are interested in anything we can do to, you know, help y'all with making this decision and coming up with other alternatives that maybe would be even more cost effective. And I understand that, that Gary Keller has had an offer for somebody to buy that home as residential property, which would be great. I think we all agree that we could get rid of the pink color and it would be a whole lot nicer. But it would be very important for this part of Rollingwood. Y'all talked earlier about community and development from, from Friesen, Nichols and Pegasus. That's, that's important to us also.
Thank you, Dr. Hauser. I appreciate all the time that you and your wife have spent and, you know, obviously, community means all of us together. So I appreciate you coming and spending some time to share your thoughts with all of us. And please be assured and anyone else listening, as, as Wendy properly pointed out, none of these decisions are going to get made in a bubble and none of these decisions are going to get made without ample community input. So thank, thanks again for, for coming and speaking with us. And I'm sure I'm not alone in saying that there's a wide open line for communication going forward. Amber, do we have anyone else with their hands raised to speak on this item?
No.
No, I tell you what, if there's anybody else in the forum, I'm going to give you a couple of seconds to find the, find the hand raise. One, going twice. Anything Amber?
No.
Okay, well, we will move on to item number eight.
Before we move on.
No, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
So where is this in the zoning process with P and Z?
It has been published and notification went out to all the property owners in the city of Rollingwood of the application to rezone. They are going to have a discussion item at their May 27th meeting, no action. And then they will, they will consider it for action on June 3rd, or no, sorry, June 10th. And then it will come before council with a public hearing again on June 17th.
Okay. Thank you. And the only thing I would say, I was a little surprised, maybe I missed a memo, but I was a little surprised to see the site plans in our packet here. That was news to me that we were looking at a total rebuild, so.
Sorry, just, just to be clear Gavin, for clarity's sake, these aren't site plans per se, right? I asked the folks at Stanley. So I think you're, it's, it's.
Sorry, I'm confusing the title, the title.
Fair. Well, I get, allow me then to apologize for any confusion that the, that the title suggests. They are, they are renderings that were done at, solely at my request because what I was getting back was a lot of question marks as to what could happen here. And to help, to help kind of stem some of the wandering imaginations, this is an opportunity. The same opportunity is to leave the exact building standing where it is, although I think you're going to have to have a discussion on whether or not a severe Although I think you're going to have to have a discussion on whether or not, a severe, a serious discussion as to whether or not it's more cost effective to remediate or to rebuild.
Okay.
Um, I would add too, that from my understanding from when we did our needs analysis with Brinkley Stargent on how much space that we need for our PD department to have adequate facilities for evidence storage, offices, lockers, showers, et cetera, that were at about eighteen hundred square feet. And so I think that Mayor Dyson worked to kind of draw out what it would look like to build an eighteen hundred square foot building there, considering from what I understand, there may be.
I asked for a little bit of contingency on there because one of the, one of the things that was contemplated in the Brinkley Stargent, right, is this, is some level of shared use, shared use space with a PD and, and City Hall being constructed together at over four thousand square foot, right? So the renderings that you looked at kind of more contemplate probably closer to a two thousand square foot place.
So that would be news to me too, because I think in the conversations I've had with, with the citizens, I've expressed that my understanding is that it's just a standalone PD and it wouldn't have other uses.
No, no, no. Sorry, you misunderstood me. You misunderstood me. I'm, the, the, you, you noted that the rendering was eighteen hundred square foot. And actually, the conversation that I had was closer to two thousand square foot, not that this building was going to have other uses.
Okay. Because that's something that, that would be a concern to the neighbors is having it become a City Hall or having it become more of a, a high-traffic.
Yeah, no, sorry. Yeah, the idea wasn't a deviation from, from that conversation. The, the, the point was because it's going to be potentially a standalone facility, you may need to have a contingent level of square footage in there. And a little over ten percent was added to a two thousand square foot outside of an eighteen hundred square foot. PD, just PD. So just.
And I have been communicating with the neighbors with, you know, the best that I can do because we as a city council haven't met on this. We haven't made any decisions. And so I think it's important to note that anything that, you know, we talk about, the decisions we're going to make are going to be based on community input. And I also think that, that what I've expressed to the, to the people that I've talked to is that this will be used for a PD, that our PD and our court system are separate functions. We don't, you don't have somebody come to the police department to pay their ticket, right? You don't hold court at a police department. We still have the separate function where our court and court clerk will be at City Hall where people will come and pay the tickets and they will hold court. But for our police department, we now are fully staffed at nine officers and we generally have two to four officers on duty at a time. Generally, when people call into the city and the non-emergency number, the police dispatch out to them. And when people call for an emergency, the police dispatch out to them. I had the benefit of living across the street from the police trailer for eight months and had firsthand experience to see how much foot traffic really comes to the police department and, and what kind of neighbors they are. So I feel confident in speaking to, that is, as something that I've experienced firsthand. And I, you know, other than the people that maybe every once in a while come to pick up a form or drop off a form or the sweet elderly residents who before COVID would come in and visit and bring cookies and really, because our police department is such a community place, they use that as, as one of their social outlets. And they visit with the police officers often. That, you know, is, is an important piece of the conversation that I've had with residents. And it's something that helped people to say, I'm okay with this use because then it's not going to be this big, busy facility in the neighborhood that's going to start annoying me as a residential neighbor. It's going to fit into my lifestyle and to where I live. And if, if that isn't our, our intention of this facility, I think it's important that we make that intentional as a city council moving forward. We memorialize it somehow. And, and we convey that to the residents so that there is security that we're not going to actually go and build City Hall here and move it over there because it's not a bait and switch where, you know, this is the intention of this purchase if we do it and for the use of the facility. And if it wasn't for the location of this specific house where it is, where we stage for all of our major events, where it's a, a place where people come in and out of the city that's located next to the Green Bell area, which has had its share of crime and where our police presence would be beneficial to the city, I don't think that we would be exploring this opportunity. But because we have been offered to purchase this property at one point two, which is what we went under contract for, when it was purchased at one point nine, and we're basically being gifted as a city about seven hundred thousand dollars for this property, it's worth us as the city council exploring this specific property. I wouldn't be out just trying to search for property to purchase for the city. But I think that this specific property has a benefit to the entire community by being located there. And that's why I think that we need to explore it with our citizens.
Yeah. All really good points. Thank you very much for that, Wendy. Yeah, just to, to one, one point, I can't imagine anybody up here, I hope, there's never a situation where bait and switch is, is a intellectually honest conversation. I've, I've engaged with you guys now for a year's worth of work and I've never found that to be the case. I have confidence, every confidence that you guys wouldn't approach any situation that way, certainly not something of this magnitude. So thank you for making that note. And I'm happy to have conversations with, again, any concerned neighbors, especially those who may be changing their minds for various reasons. Any other comments, questions? Sarah, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing that I wanted to point out when we've had citizens ask for the access for vehicles to be from the Zilker Clubhouse Road, since that's not a Rollingwood street, my understanding is that we would have to get approval from the city of Austin for that. And so that, that would not be solely at our discretion, right? We'd, we'd have to get approval from Austin in order to access that property from their street.
That, that's potential, but there's also up and down the properties on Vale. There's precedence for ingress and egress to and from properties in Rollingwood onto, onto that parkway.
That, there is, but my understanding when this came up before with another home on that street was that those, those homes that had already driveways from that road were allowed to keep them as long as the house stayed there. But if the house was removed, their authorization for that access was eliminated and they were not allowed to have that access back.
So I'm, I'm aware of at least one new build on the, on Vale that does have, it's actually their sole ingress and egress, their driveway. It's a gated driveway that does open up onto the parkway. It is a, as I mentioned, it is a new build. So it's, I don't know if there are special circumstances there, but it's certainly a conversation that would need to be pursued and, and fully, fully vetted.
I just wanted to bring that up because I know that was an issue with a home previously, so.
No, it's, it's definitely valid.
Chief Brady has been working on getting our interlocal agreement with city of Austin so that we have jurisdiction over patrolling that area formalized. And so I think that that would be something that we would be able to use as part of our conversation when we're formalizing our interlocal to see whether or not that access is feasible. But I think we have a really good open line of communication with the city of Austin right now. And so I think that conversation we could easily have. But it's a good point.
Right. No, and I don't, I don't know that there would be any reason why we would not be able to get approval. I just wanted to make sure that we did not give assurances to anybody that that's what we're going to do if it's not something that's solely within our control.
Right. Sounds good. Thank you very much, Sarah. Is there anything else, counsel, before we move on to item eight?
Mayor, it sounds like Dr. Hauser was under the impression that we were going to have some police working at the Vale location and some still at the Nixon location. And I just wanted to clarify that it would be the intent to have all of the police department located at the Vale location and not have any police function at City Hall. And potential use of, of, of the police offices. As you know, we've got Abel in the corner in the council chambers. He might get an office. And we've got, we've also, I would like to possibly bring utility billing in-house. And so that, that we could easily use the space that we just remodelled.
Sure. No, I, I appreciate that. And Amber, what that, I think the points you make speak to the needs assessment that was commissioned under Roxanne McKee. And, and what we learned from that is that we currently have deficiencies with regard to spatial needs for our city staff, administration and services. So again, I, I appreciate you both clarifying that and, and underscoring the fact that we may be able to squeeze a little extra blood out of the turnip from City Hall. Anything else on this item, counsel or staff? All right. Move on to item eight, discussion, possible action on ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of city of Rollingwood's Texas tax notes, Series 2020, levying a tax and payment thereof and enacting other provisions related to the subject. So counsel, you have in your packet the ordinance, I wonder.
Mayor, I have promoted James Gilli, our financial advisor, and Jerry Kyle and Natalie to panelists. So they have the opportunity to unmute and share their cameras and speak to this item.
Well, if it's okay with you, I'll jump in and start off.
That'd be great.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. For the record, I'm sure you can see I'm James Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, council instructed us to take bid for the sale of these two million, approximately two million dollars in tax notes for the multiple purposes of purchasing a possible purpose of property and infrastructure improvements within the city. We, in the, over the past few weeks, we've been preparing a term sheet, offering document. We distributed that last week to investors across the, across the state, across the country. And this morning at ten o'clock, we, bids were, bids were due and I'm pleased to present the results of that sale. Just to stop myself, I'm getting a little bit of feedback, but can everyone hear me okay?
Um, it sounds like Charlie Brown's teacher's here for me when you're talking.
If we could get folks.
Do you have a phone and a computer on by chance?
No, I don't.
If I could just get folks to maybe mute their mics and let's see if that, if that gets it. Well, and, and James, you go ahead.
Okay. Well, my, my dog ate my homework, so I guess I'll can keep going. I believe that you have a presentation in the council packet beginning on a hundred, page one hundred and fifty-two. It's a bond sale summary that we've prepared. As I, as I mentioned, bids were due this morning at ten o'clock. We received a total of four bids from different banks. The best bid was submitted by First National Bank out of Huntsville, Texas. And they submitted a, their offer was calculated at a true interest cost of one point six four seven nine three one. The, as you can see on page one of that bond sale summary, there was, again, three additional bids. The next closest bid was more than ten basis points higher from Trustmark. So the, in, in the bond sale summary, the, the bid, the pages that follow include the bid form that was submitted by First National Bank. And additionally, on page, page four, we've put together a, the analysis that you may have seen before. We've, we've completed, we filled in the final numbers, the final debt service numbers from First National Bank's offer.
And was that about, was that eleven bips better than what you estimated on the last, the last estimate?
Yes, it's, we were estimating approximately, I believe, one point seven five percent. And interestingly, the Trustmark and TIB Bank were pretty close to that. And so we believe that First National Bank aggressively bid to the benefit of the city. And so this, we believe this is illustrative of the, you know, a, the benefit of a competitive auction-type approach where we let banks compete against themselves. So the city clearly benefited from this approach. The tax notes are callable at any time at a price of, a price of par with, so with no, no prepayment penalty. And as I, as you recall, that was a feature that was strongly desired by the, by the council.
Yes.
The, the, the debt service numbers, the pages that follow provide additional detail on the, on the, on the, the debt service numbers of the, the final numbers of the tax notes. And the, the final amount, the dollar amount that will be delivered to the city on, on June eighteenth, on the date of closing, is two million, three thousand and forty dollars. And those are just, the, the reason for the odd amount is that there were additional proceeds left over from the sale after costs were paid. And those will also be, those will be delivered to the city. So we were very pleased with the results of the sales. I'm sure you can imagine there has been a lot of uncertainty in the market. There's, there's just, you know, investors don't like uncertainty. I'm sure I don't have to tell you, but we think that the city got an excellent result. This, the result is indicative of the city's strong credit. So you can imagine that in a time, such a time of uncertainty, investors are going to look for a, a strong, secure investment. And so I'd like to commend the city on your, your prudent and conservative budgetary management. And we're, we're just very happy with the results of the sale. We think, we hope the city is just as pleased as we are. And it's a, it's, it's an honor to serve as the city's financial advisor and I'll open the floor to any questions. But if, if there's any hard questions or legal questions, I'll have to turn that over to the city's bond counsel, Jerry Kyle.
But this is a question maybe for bond counsel. Where do I find in the ordinance packet related to the usage of the funds?
Hey, Mr. Masagil, Jerry Kyle, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, it's section three oh one of the ordinance.
Thank you.
That's on page, I think it's page one thirty of your package.
Yeah, I've got it. Under authorization.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're including, we've, we've cast a wide enough net. We've got municipal utilities, building structures, facilities. All of that would allow us to do any and all of our. All of that would allow us to do any and all of our IPP projects. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've, we've tried to draft this as broadly as possible, bearing in mind that the Attorney General is going to want some level of specificity. The, the one thing that they may ask for a little more specificity here is around the municipal utilities. And if they do, you know, my proposal will be to provide a certification to them to the effect, with, with y'all's permission, to the effect that the municipal utilities in question would be drainage or waterworks, which is my understanding of what y'all are looking at.
Yeah, and that was going to be my question. If, if in fact we, we consider municipal utilities to include drainage projects also, because you could maybe argue that those aren't really utilities per se.
Yeah, under 1502 of the government code, those are considered to be a, a type of municipal utility.
Perfect. Great.
And I'd be happy to answer any other questions about the ordinance or kind of, you know, walk y'all through the highlights, one of which is section 301.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love you to do that. And I just, I'll just reiterate before you do, what we're talking about really speaks to what Councilwoman Hunley's point was earlier. If and when we move forward with this today, we're giving ourselves ample opportunity to, to use these funds for other needed projects, regardless of what we do on the real estate.
And if I could make one comment on that, I agree, we are attempting to provide the most flexibility we can for federal tax purposes. The, my, my tax partner is going to, you know, want to know. And based on what I've heard and seen so far, I think we, we were fine in this regard. But the city should have a reasonable expectation that it will spend at least 85% of the proceeds within three years and that it will enter into a binding obligation or contract to spend at least 5% of the proceeds within six months. I, I, my, my sense is that the drainage project is far enough along. It sounds like y'all have some more deliberation to do around the, the, the use of the property. But you have a, a contract for the purchase of the, the parcel. So I think the, the 5% seems like not too heavy of a lift, but just wanted to make sure that y'all were aware of those two.
Yeah, with the project, the drainage project that we've already identified, we could do that easily in that timeframe. And then we have, because of our IP plan, we've got ample other opportunities if we needed them.
That's great. That's awesome. If you'd like, I can just highlight a couple of things in the ordinance. If that'd be helpful.
Yes.
Yes, please.
So then, you know, just page 129 of your, of your packages, section 201 is the tax levy and, and to provide a source of payment for the, for the notes. And then, as we mentioned a minute ago, on page 130, section 301 sets forth the principal and the, the purposes for which the notes are issued. And then section 302 is the amortization. So these are the annual principal payments and the, the related interest rates for the notes. Page 134. And I'm happy to talk about any of the other provisions if y'all have questions. But more to, page 134, section 402, the notes are subject to optional redemption in full or in part prior maturity on any date that the city's option. I think that was something that y'all, the last meeting was kind of important. Let's see. And then page 138, just wanted to point out, section 701 is where the award is made to the purchaser. The, the definitions are of the document and purchaser is First National Bank of Huntsville, the, the winning bidder that James mentioned earlier. And the purchase price is, is at par, the $2,65,000. Let's see, and then if I can drop down to page 143. Let's see. Yeah, I just wanted to point out, in, in, in the tax governance, at the end of the tax governance, section 905, these were offered as qualified tax exempt obligations. And what that does is it allows the city to get a slightly better interest rate. It, it, it's, it's an extra incentive for banks to, to bid. They're allowed to deduct both the interest on the notes and their, their cost of carry. But, so in doing that, the city has to represent that it can issue more than $10 million tax exempt obligations this calendar year. So that's section 905. And then I think that, actually, those were the highlights I was going to point out. But as I say, I'm happy to answer any questions about any other sections in here.
Could you go back to section 2.01 under the tax levy and explain the sentence, but never less than 2% of the original principal amount of the notes each year?
Yeah, that's kind of a, an idiosyncrasy under Texas law. All cities and counties, whenever they incur basically a geo-debt, that is, any debt that's payable from an advenable tax under the Constitution, this exact language appears in the Constitution as it relates to any debt incurred by a city or a county. So literally verbatim, we have to say in the tax levy that the tax levy will be in an amount not less than what's required to pay principal or to maintain a 2% sinking fund. Pretty much, you know, all municipal debt these days, if you do the math, the, the amount required to amortize, to pay the debt as it comes due is the larger of those two numbers. It's, it's more than 2%, but we still have to say it that way because that's what the Constitution calls for.
Okay.
So, so by definition, by satisfying the, the amortization schedule that's stipulated in section 302, you will pass that, that threshold. You, you won't be levying at the 2%, you'll be levying actually at a higher rate than that.
Okay. But that shouldn't detract from our ability, if, if, if we're able. Nevermind, I got it. I understand.
Um, I think you already said this, but for clarity's sake for me, because it's a lot of information. So if, the, the way this is structured with a private bank, we would be allowed that if we wanted to pay it off at any point, we would allow, be allowed to do that without any penalty.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, Jerry and I are both on the same page. That's good. Yes, you're correct. First National Bank is, is allowing an anytime call feature as we request, as we stipulated.
Great.
Did all, did the other banks who bid, did they all agree to that term as well?
Yes, they did. It was part, it was a requirement as written in the offering document, the term sheet that we distributed.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the explanation, counsel. Do you have any additional thoughts or questions for bond counsel or or for James? Sorry, James. Blanket on your title, buddy. It's been a long effort.
Unless Gavin has questions or other council members have a question, or if anyone else wants to make a motion, I'll be happy to make a motion. I move to approve ordinance 2020-05-08, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Rollingwood, Texas tax notes, Series 2020, levying a tax and payment thereof and enacting other provisions related to the subject.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, counsel?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional conversation, counsel?
I would just reiterate what both Wendy and I have already said. This allows us to, to do a number of important projects in the, in the city to, to include possibly the most important projects around some of our drainage needs. While I'm not ready to, to go into detail yet, I will say that Abel and Amber and I have spent a little time looking at some options for us in regard to the rest of the budget. I, I'm pretty confident, based on some of our initial runs on the budget, that, that we'll be able to, to do this in a way that's, if not budget neutral, essentially budget neutral. So there should be a level of confidence when we vote on this, that we can do it in a way that's
Not impactful, not impactful on everyone's tax rate.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Hold on. Can you hear me now?
There we go. Now I got you.
Sorry.
All right.
I can't see you. Hold on one second.
I tried, I tried to fill in the blank for you.
I'm sure you did a good job. I was just going to say, we, we think we can probably do it in a budget neutral way or not budget neutral, very close to it with existing resources. And so I, I think this note, these notes really need to be viewed from a liquidity standpoint, from a standpoint of giving us needed cash flow. And, and, and I think we'll be able to handle most of the debt service with existing resources.
Thanks. And before we vote, I just want to also indicate that this is not the first time that you guys have made a strong, both prudent and, and conservative approach or aggressive approach, I guess, depending on how you look at it. As James pointed out, right, this is the same council that voted in favor refinancing existing bonds that ultimately saved us 2.7 million in cash flow. So what you're actually doing right now is, as you mentioned, grabbing that much needed cash flow that is not going to. We should be able to figure out intelligent ways to absorb it without the, the general public feeling.
Agreed. If I could borrow money at 1.6, I would do it all day long, but I can't.
Yeah. Thank, and thanks in advance to the Bank of Huntsville for that. All right, counsel, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? We'll call a vote. Wendy?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Gavin?
Aye.
And just for the record, Amy had to leave us for, to attend to some personal business. Otherwise, I'm sure she would have joined in the vote. Motion carries four in favor and none against. Thank you, counsel. James, Jerry, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. We'll call up item nine. Discussion possible action on the selection of a firm to perform comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan for the City of Rollingwood is complicated by chapter 213 of the Texas Local Government Code. The council, we first did presentations in response to our RFP. Now's your opportunity to make a, make a decision on one of those two, or I guess, or you're doing either. Sarah, go ahead.
So I'm not sure what the latest impetus was for bringing this up. I know that several months ago at a P and Z meeting, I suggested that we do some comprehensive planning. My concern at the time and the, kind of the environment that I brought it up in was related to our residential issues. And my point at the P and Z meeting was that we needed to do some planning on what we wanted our residential area to look like, because right now we're letting the builders decide what that is. And we, we need to talk about what it is that we value in Rollingwood, what we want as citizens, what we want. And I really had, at the time, I was not at all concerned about the commercial part of this. It was strictly a residential concern. I feel like definitely, and maybe the RFP that was sent out was not specific to that. I, I don't think it really focused on the commercial. I think the Pegasus response and the comment that he made was clearly focusing on the commercial. And, and I think that they really didn't include covering the residential at all. I think the Fries and Nichols proposal did include some of that. And they talked about the character of the neighborhood and things like that that we wanted to preserve. But I really think it's important for us to consider the residential side and not just the commercial side. Because that's really, right now, where most of our development is coming from, where most of the issues that we're having at P and Z, at Board of Adjustments, at those places are with, with the residential redevelopment.
So that's all, all certainly fair. And I know we've, we obviously, we have a long record of slowly but thoughtfully working through our code with regards to getting that tied or some of these issues tied up and tightened up, I suppose, through our residential area. Just to, to kind of bring the context back as to why comprehensive planning was actually intended to emphasize our commercial district, but, but also applies to, to whatever degree counsel and the community wanted to, to the, the entire, the entire city. This is part and particle to the retail coach report. That assessment, those, those funds, you know, they're not actionable if we don't start addressing some of the, some of the points that were, were underscored there. And that was actually a shared concern of both RCDC and planning and zoning, which, you know, has also been a part of the conversation for the community for any number of years, whether our commercial zoning made the most sense to, to encourage the kind of development that we both want and, and need as a community here. I think that's why maybe there's, where, there was a trend towards the commercial side from, from both presentations. There's also been obviously a, you know, a long time conversation, at least since I've been involved with the city, about what, what does the city look like, right? And unfortunately, what does the city look like doesn't translate, at least to me personally, as, as an actionable item. But gathering data on what best practices and what opportunities are out there and cross referencing that data with what our community needs and wants are, that culminates in a plan, and a plan is actionable. And, and I think that's what, in my, at least in my mind, has brought us to this conversation. I think it would be a lot fresher in everyone's mind if a world hadn't flipped upside down a few months ago. Amber, when did we go out for this RFP?
Ashley researched the timeline on this, so I'm going to promote her to panelist. But I, I also want to
I also want to talk to kind of the scope, and maybe the reason why it seems like it's pared down a bit is because it is. The initial response, we initially only received one response, and it was for $120,000. And so that seems to be what comprehensive plans are running. And so we asked them to kind of focus on some of the important residential code questions that seem to arise a lot, which is the accessory buildings, setbacks, and fences. And then also to focus on the commercial corridor, as Mayor Dyson pointed out, as part of the Retail Coach study. So that's, we were hoping to get an affordable plan that really focused on some of the things we need. I also want to give a shout out to Carrie, because since she's been online, we've only had two Board of Adjustment meetings. So I think it speaks to her expertise and ability to help builders navigate the code and comply with the code, and not provide a level of misunderstanding. So I've been impressed with her performance in regard to that. Ashley, do you want to speak to the timeline?
Oh. You're still on mute. Wait. Let me see if it's on my line. Is it? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I had to switch computers. So we ran it, and we ran the ad in the Westlake Piquet on December 19th of 2019, and in the Statesman on December 12th. And the deadline was January 23rd, and we did not receive any in that first round. So I believe we extended it another two or three weeks and ended up with our proposals we had.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Raise my hand. So I wanted to comment on the two proposals we saw, one coming in at 60,000, and then one coming in at 90,000. And the 90,000 did focus on the parks, the residential, really had a, I feel still a bigger scope than what we, as a city, might need. And the 60,000 focusing more on the commercial still seems like an awful lot to me. But I do, like, when I'm looking at it from a city council perspective and from a budget perspective, if we, as a city, are gonna pay $60,000 for a comprehensive plan, then I want to know what the return on investment is for that. And while I think we can still continue to work through our residential code and some of the issues we have with that, that focusing the study on our commercial district and zoning, where we can get more sales tax base to start covering more of our city expenses, instead of relying so much on our residential property tax to fund our budget, that if there's bang for the buck in doing this, if there's a reason to do this at all, it would be for us to be able to redevelop our commercial district in a smart way, with a comprehensive plan, where there's a roadmap, with a way for us to go, even though city councils may turn over, people may come and go, we'll be able to have a guiding document to get us there. And it's not something that you can generally do in two years, or three years, which is a term of office. And so I think having a guiding document that will get us to redevelop our commercial district, where we can have more property tax, I mean, more sales tax, and better and best and highest use of those properties, is really why I'd be willing to spend some money on this plan.
And guys, if I could just talk about timing on these items as well, right? It shouldn't be lost on any of us, certainly not after the data that's been collected. And just two presentations, we've had two presenters that talked to us about, you know, the underdevelopment through our commercial corridor. We have a report from Retail Coach that highlights the same. You can go back to a 1990 document that the City of Rollingwood undertook, and then didn't act upon, for whatever reasons. And it says the same thing. We have an opportunity now, the way, you know, we just talked about how cheap capital is. It's not just our city that has access to cheap capital. It's going to be the folks that also own these pieces of property and are so motivated to redevelop these properties. You start talking about economic cycles and build cycles, and you're walking into one where these folks are going to be motivated to take a look at it. And we, as a community, need to be motivated to tell them what they can and can't do. And the only way for us to really have that understanding is if we've already, I'm sure, and we have a firm understanding as to what our community wants and needs actually are, so that we can have a constructive conversation there. I think I see you, Gavin. In any case, I guess my point here being, timing is everything in this world. And while the rest of this world is flipped up on its head, or at least sideways in some instances, this is the right opportunity and the right timing for the City of Rollingwood to figure out what we want through that area. Instead, as Sarah, you've maybe intimated, take control of this, put a framework around it, so that we can have the conversation as to what things generally should look like and will look like, and are in our best interest, rather than to respond when things just happen to us. So that's an opportunity that we have to have to do that intelligently. You have to have data. We've been diligent for the last several years collecting data. And now it's time, as Gavin pointed out several months ago, to start tying these balloon strings together, right? Those balloon strings literally get tied together with a comprehensive plan. We've got resources with our IIP now. We've got resources with Retail Coach. You know, there are a couple of additional bits that I would love to see, including a deeper dive into our water lines, and specifically what needs we have there. You know, it's, we're dangerously close to having all the data we need to have a ridiculously efficient and effective plan. This is, in furtherance, and why we hired a comprehensive planner was largely, as Gavin pointed out, we've got a lot of balloon string. Let's tie them together. And that's what these guys do. And that's why we're having this conversation.
So on that note, and someone brought it up earlier in one of the presentations, and I don't remember the answer, who gave the answer, that they don't like to repeat work, but we do have the IIP, we have the Park Master Plan.
Yep.
Whoever we go with, if we go with someone, they need to include those into the comprehensive plan. If they want to, I mean, it can be an appendix, it can be whatever, but that needs to be, they don't need to just ignore those work products that we've already done. Is that the point? Is that the thought?
They can. I would argue, I would argue even stronger than that, they cannot ignore that. We've spent good money, time, and resources. We've done a great job engaging the community in those activities, right? And in truth, you know, both, I think, outfits are very well qualified. But the reason Pegasus was really a standout to me is, it seems to me that they got that. You know, some of the first conversations or points in the first presentation prompted, you know, all right, Fries and Nichols' presentation prompted a, you know, generation of a logo and some brand conversation around it. Well, we spent a lot of time and effort putting that together a year and a half ago. Well, it culminated a year and a half ago. And so I think you're absolutely right, Gavin. None of this stuff, we're not gonna write off anything that we've already done. As a matter of fact, we did all those things, and now whatever we put together next needs to tie those items together. So not just an appendix. Those are guiding documents on how we tie it all together.
And we were very clear with both proposers before they submitted any, well, the first one submitted one, but before they submitted a second round, that we saw total value in the plans we already have, and felt as though they should be consulting those plans in the right of the comprehensive plan. And so we made sure and shared those documents with them. And I think that's why, you know, in the proposals, particularly from Pegasus, you'll see that he feels like we've done a lot of the groundwork, and can solve some of the other questions that we have.
Okay. My next question, I'll pause, hand raised, unless somebody else is still going.
Go for it, Gavin.
This question is mainly to Amber, and it won't make a lot of sense to everyone, but I promise we will go into more detail on this when we start talking about the budget. But Amber, do we have the dollars available for this, this budget? And more specifically, if the answer is yes, does this, you know, we've looked at some of those first conversations with Abel of looking at our three-month and a four-month reserve, and then we've added in the tax debt service and some of those things to figure out how much money we would need to try to claw back out of the M&amp;O. Would, if we pay for this now, will that materially affect what we have available to do those other things that we've talked about?
No, we have enough beyond the four-month reserve, beyond some of the other things you talked about, beyond covering, you know, the additional debt service that y'all issued tonight. We would have enough to cover that, and it would not be a material change, it would just be 67,000. I think we would have about 500,000, including the 60,000. So it's not budgeted for. We would come back and do a budget amendment, but we do have funds available.
That would not detract from our ability to do the other savings that we've talked about?
Correct. Correct.
So Amber, when you were talking to the, both of the people that submitted proposals, did you let them know we had just done the branding study?
I didn't let them know we had done the branding study, but I will make sure they are aware.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, instead of pointing that out as a defect in the Fries and Nichols report, if they were not told that we had done that, and that's something that they think is important, you know, they pointed out the need for that, which we've already done, we'd already done it. Pegasus didn't address that.
And it might speak to the research they did on the community, the two firms, you know, Pegasus may have researched our website, researched the newspapers. It was pretty public.
There's a level of due diligence that I would anticipate any potential vendor undertaking if they're making a serious bid for a project. And I guess, to your point, Amber, sorry for the interruption, but, you know, none of this stuff happened years ago. And if you haven't figured out, you know, just with basic due diligence, that these aren't items, these are items that were just recently undertaken from the city in a fairly public way, and were certainly covered in the media and pressed, then, you know, I don't know that it's incumbent on us to go back and spell that out for somebody.
Yeah, I'm not sold on either one of the companies, so that's not really my primary concern. My biggest concern with this is that we need to get some evaluation of our residential areas as well. And I understand the benefit of increasing our sales tax. I would also like to point out that in light of the current situation, we're probably better off than a lot of cities, in that most of our income is from property taxes, because we're not taking the hit. We're not taking the hit, but a lot of, so somebody that relies 70% on sales tax, they're probably hurting right now. And we are gonna weather that.
You're not wrong there, but I think, and it's not the first time I've heard that argument, and it's valid. If all we were talking about is sales tax, yeah, Gavin, what a component that...
We will get property tax too. Mike, can I?
Yeah. You're not just talking about property tax. You're talking about 10x property tax, appraisal values in some of this redevelopment areas, right? That 10x on a low side, just to put that in perspective for you, that's taking a $7 million property in excess of $100 million in some instances, and that's 5%, 4.5% to our entire annual revenues. You know, I'll ask Gavin or Abel how many pennies that is on your tax rate, but that's significant. And that's one property at 3.8, right? So that's...
So my biggest issue, can I get to that, Mike, before we get off on the taxes? My biggest issue is if you want to look at the costs that the city is facing, the, by far, the biggest number out there that we are getting ready to have to deal with is our drainage projects. 17-plus million dollars. We've got nothing else that approaches that. All of those projects that are included in that cost are in residential areas, because that cost doesn't include B Caves Road or the Edge Grove Bridge. Those are all residential properties. If we avoid dealing with issues in our residential area, we are gonna see more water, more drainage problems, more cost. We have got to address residential stuff, or our biggest loss is gonna get bigger.
I don't necessarily disagree with that point, but I'll also tell you, if you look at the IIP and at least two of those drainage concerns, it is actually more cost-effective for the city to purchase the home, demo the home, and build a retention pond there than it is to repair the drainage issue some of the time. And I think that's the biggest issue with some of the, certainly the most expensive ticket items, in truth, and I know it's not an easy thing to hear, but those homes probably should not have been built there to begin with. And, you know, that's tough. That's a really tough thing to say, and I'm sorry if that's offensive to folks, but, you know, putting a home at the, you know, basin of 108-acre drainage basin, that's ridiculous. That's why you needed a comprehensive plan 65 years ago, as to how this whole eight tenths of a square mile got built out, right?
That would have been good, but it didn't happen. But I think that if we are concerned, we've got people concerned with putting a police station in a residential area, the concept of having a drainage pond in a residential area, that's probably not gonna go over well either.
You bet. And can you imagine?
And even if we bought the houses, even if we bought the houses and did that, we'd have to have money for that, too. So we're still having to pay to address drainage issues.
Sure. And can you imagine if we were having a discussion during this same call about a comprehensive look at the zoning, the residential zoning? We just talked about it in one instance. I can't even imagine how many people are going to show up to find out what kind of conversation we're having as to the aesthetics of what a home could and couldn't look like through certain neighborhoods, right? That's a whole different ball of wax. And I'm not suggesting that we don't talk about it. I'm just suggesting that everybody understand what that conversation's gonna entail before you open up that can of worms.
I, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, I don't think what I'm talking about is an architectural review board. I'm talking about things like our tree canopy, which we're trying to address, which we still have issues with. I'm talking about impervious cover limits, which our IIP plan that we just approved today says that we need to address an impervious cover restriction in our neighborhood. I'm talking to... I'm talking about the setbacks that we have, people that are coming in trying to get the setbacks eliminated. We've got people that are advertising properties for sale in Rollingwood with a casita. I've seen multiple of those now. So, that's not single residents on a property anymore. They're, we're kind of oozing into that area as well. All of the things that the whole Codex City of Austin is doing, those issues are going to come up too. I mean, that was brought up in one of the presentations on, you know, backhouses or whatever. I mean, those are the kind of things. I'm not talking about, you know, what we want the home themselves designed to look like. I'm talking about what we want the neighborhood to include, the front yard fences, all of those things that we've been addressing in the past. I think those are the things that we need to be talking about here.
Hey guys, this has been going on for three hours and 17 minutes. We need, this isn't even the agenda item that is in front of us right now. We need to either vote on this agenda item or move on to the next one. This is out of control. Come on, we need to be a little more respective of everybody else's time.
With that, we don't have a motion on the table. We do have an item on whether or not there wants to be action taken as far as hiring a, one of these, hiring one of these firms. Do we have a motion, counsel?
I'll make the motion, but then I do have some things that I would like to add to the discussion of this item, and be respectful of everyone's time. But I will move that we select Pegasus to perform a comprehensive plan for the city of Rollingwood as contemplated by Chapter 213 of the Texas Land Government Code.
We have a motion. Do we have a second, counsel?
Okay.
You have a second from Amy. Now we're open back up for discussion. Go ahead.
My discussion points were, what I pointed out in our discussion of the scope when we had the presentation, is I want to make sure that we really have the scope of what we want nailed down before we finalize an agreement. For me, although I do agree with Councilmember Hudson, that we do need to spend some time on our residential land development code, because having a drainage criteria manual trying to serve as that vehicle is causing us to create moats in our neighborhood, and we really have to have that discussion as a community, and it needs to happen. But I don't see that being what we need to pay an extra $30,000 for. I think it's a community discussion that needs to happen, but the return on investment that I see through having this comprehensive plan where the focus would be, would be in the commercial district. So, if we could just make sure that we have time to comment on what the scope of the work would be before we go in with the agreement, that's important to me.
Okay. It's a fair assessment. Any other conversation or thoughts, counsel, on the, there's a motion, as I said, on the table?
Looks like we lost Sarah.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Sarah. Okay.
I'm still here.
I'm from Sarah.
Mayor, I have one thing.
Okay, go ahead, Amy, please.
Sorry, I apologize for needing to leave the meeting temporarily. Jonah had a sports banquet, so...
Welcome back.
I had a conflict, but I appreciate being able to jump back in the discussion. And one of the things that I thought was important, based, I may have picked up on the questions I was asking, is deliverables. And so, I do think having an actual deliverable of land code that we can vote on, and that being part of the process that we're working on as a community is an important thing, rather than a plan of guided tools.
It's a valid point. And the land code, that came through, that's one of the deliverables offered at Pegasus, is that correct? I think.
Right, so that's why I was asking about that question, and I'd also had a chance to talk with Jordan Scott a little bit, and he was able to review both proposals. And that was one of the things that both of us noticed that was different about the proposals, that seems like an important piece for things that we've tried to do in the past, and knowing how our community works, and that the resources that we do have available. If we don't have a deliverable that helps us really quickly transition into actually adopting code, that makes it more challenging.
Do we have feedback from P&amp;Z on this? You had a conversation, Amy, with Jordan. I've talked with Jordan, I guess, a little while ago, but not necessarily specifically to which, one proposal over another. Simply the fact that P&amp;Z was very much in favor of taking on a comprehensive zoning approach, or look at zoning, I guess.
We talked today, he had a chance to review with them, and had, you know, both of them are offering the type of service that we're looking for. That was just one difference. And as I was evaluating the presentations, that was at least for me, a difference that I wanted to hear about and use as a marker.
Great. All right, thanks.
Jordan Scott has his hand raised. Would you like to recognize him?
Yes, please. Thanks, Jordan.
Jordan, you can unmute.
I was just saying, I'm here and I'm dying. It's so weird to be spoken about in the third person.
Glad you're still here.
Any insight from P&amp;Z that you may want, but I think you guys have covered it, so.
Based on this, do you, Jordan, can I be so bold as to ask if you or P&amp;Z has a preference on one of the two proposals?
We received them on Friday, and I, we just haven't had a chance to talk about it. So, my take was, both of them will do a competent job. There were strengths to both proposals, and so, I think you guys will do, I don't think you can go wrong. Sorry to give you a wishy-washy answer, but it's true. I think you guys will do great either way.
Thanks, Jordan. Okay. Do we have anybody else with their hand raised? Amber?
Buck, are you still, do you want to speak?
I'm good.
You raised your hand, and then you didn't outburst anyway? You put your hand down?
Yeah, I mean, this is just, come on, let's...
It's fair. It's fair. We have a motion on the table. Do we have any other discussion, counsel? Okay, well, in that case, call for a vote. Gavin?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Sarah?
That's Dane.
Okay. The motion carries, and then, just to be clear, that this is to negotiate, or I guess, I was counsel wanting this to be done, there's a proposal in front of it, should we, you want it refined based on the points that we just discussed?
Yes.
Yeah, I think what he said to us is, make sure that you know what you want before you enter an agreement with us totally, so that we don't have any surprises.
Right. And so, I guess I'm asking you now, how exactly do you want to make sure that you are comfortable with what we are presenting to tweak the proposal in front of us?
I mean, it sounded like the scope of work that you outlined in the RFP probably includes some of what Sarah was talking about, is that correct?
Yes.
And it includes what I was talking about and Wendy was talking about. So, I think this, negotiate it based on your original RFP proposal.
Kiting that up. You got it. Okay. Hey, staff, you feel confident based on that direction?
Yeah, I think we can do it. I mean, it's, I don't think either of the proposals say they're not going to focus on residential, not address it at all. It was just that we were going to focus on the most important pieces of the residential code in order to save money and time.
Got it. And then it'll be incumbent on us to tell them specifically what the most important aspects of residential code they need to focus on, correct?
I think we, you know, Carrie has weighed in on this too, is what comes up most. It's the setbacks, it's fences, and accessory buildings. Those are the top three residential issues.
We have good guidance from our IIP.
We have good guidance from our IIP.
Great.
Unless there's something else that y'all want?
That covers all I heard today, Mike, at this point.
I just want to be in compliance with state law and have a comprehensive plan. Let's go.
Got it. All right, well, the motion carries, for, not against, one abstention. Item 10, discussion on an amendment to the city's Code of Ordinance, Section 103, 232, Stormwater Detention. For context, this was talked about and voted on last month, or I guess, the end of April, April 30th, to strike. F of that section, Sarah had submitted language ahead of the meeting, and we all agreed that we would bring it back once we had time to take a look and discuss it, and here we are. So, Amber, did I cover the background on that sufficiently, or did I miss something?
No, that's correct.
All right, counsel, Sarah specifically, you guys want to take this up? You guys, how do you guys want to discuss it? It's in your packet. It's the underlined, and Sarah, tell me if I'm wrong on this, but it's the underlined portion of Section 5F. It's the underlined section, "No part of detention facility shall be located within the right-of-way utility easement or drainage easement. Detention facility installed in a front yard must comply with the city's front yard fence requirements of Section 107-34 and retaining wall requirements in Section 107-33." Also, there was some discussion about whether or not, how many items or instances there were of this in the city, so that we knew how many people we were potentially pushing into noncompliance, which we incorporated F. Do we have, and I know there's been a lot going on, Amber, Ashley, Carrie, were we able to grab any of those items?
Go ahead, Carrie.
Why don't we have Jay? Jay sent a list, I think he's on standby, isn't he?
Yeah, Jay, you've been promoted to panelist, you can unmute yourself and address the council. Looks like he's working on it. I think I've got his list handy.
How about now?
Hi, Jay.
You can hear you.
Hello, good evening.
You were asking for the addresses?
I think we only identified one permit that has a detention pond that will be built within a PUE. We did not find any instances where a detention pond was built in the city right-of-way. But that, that doesn't rule out that there could be another detention pond that was approved that is in the PUE. I did not go through the entire history of these permits, and I have been keeping an ongoing list, but I only identified one permit with a pond in the setback. I mean, in the setback that's also in the PUE.
What kind of, is that the rear of a property?
That was it, yeah, exactly. That was at the rear end of a property.
Rear of a property, and that utility easement, is that tied into electrical easement, do you know, or?
Sure.
Car lines, water lines.
It's typical for what I, what we typically see in the city, a PUE, a shared easement or utilities.
Got it.
Hey, Jay, do those utility easements, are they delineated differently between an overhead easement and underground easement?
They're not always the same, there are variances, but typically, they're, they don't identify if it's overhead or not, but it's typically just a PUE that would be a shared easement or a combination of utilities.
Yeah, I'll speak to that.
Okay.
This is Carrie speaking. Yeah, every lot is different, and it's delineated differently by how it was prescribed in the plat. So, some of them are just aerial, some of them are both.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Wendy.
So, it's my understanding that some of the utilities pay the city of Rollingwood for the easements that go through the city? Is that how, oh, my husband's calling and knocking me off of my, okay, am I still there? Because I can't, I lost my screen, because I got a call. Okay. Is that how we have records of where the easement is? Or, like, where are the documents besides the, each individual plat that show where the utility easements are? Is it verified by where we're getting paid from the utilities that run the easements through the city? Is that the document we look at?
No, it's indicated on the plat always, and then only public communication utilities and then the city of Austin pay franchise fees to rent to be in our utility. Otherwise, if it's ours, we don't charge ourselves.
So, really, the way to find out where the easements are is to go plat by plat for platted properties?
Yes.
And then if there's an unplatted property and they're going to build, then they're required to plat their property?
Yes.
And that's when they locate the utility easements?
That's not 100% accurate. I mean, easements can be filed after a plat is filed, and you wouldn't necessarily have to replat.
Are those in the deed records?
Yeah, they're in the deed records. So, a plat's not 100% bulletproof.
True. So, would it just exercise being through the plat and the deed records when you're looking at a property, to make sure that?
Yes. You would just have to look at all the deed records.
Because we have a lot of unused easements in the city, right? Where there's a utility easement, but it's not being used for anything?
Carrie says thumbs up. Correct.
That's, and is the language that's proposed here, is this the exact same language as we saw last month? It seems like it is to me.
It is. The only exception is that this ordinance reflects the change that y'all made last time, where you struck the language. So, now it appears as... So now it appears that it's already been stricken, and now you're adding back a section F.
Instead of last, last time you were discussing potentially replacing F.
Correct.
I'm going to move to table this item, time certain to the next city council meeting so that we have some more time to get more information, because I feel like we haven't really addressed the unintended consequences of adding in, not allowing these drainage features to be in utility easements. It's going to create this moat situation for us all over again, and I'm not prepared to do that right now. So I would move to table until the next city council meeting.
If you're, if we're going to postpone it, can I, can I encourage you to give staff some very specific direction on what information you need to see to make a determination one way or another for the next time it comes around?
I mean, my, my idea, we may have to do a plat-by-plat study of the properties that have been built within the last year to get an idea of what setback that has been, maybe just the ones that we've had that have come to the city council for an appeal, like what Jay has, has looked at, where we've granted the easement even though there's a utility, so that we can understand and give direction to staff that what I don't want to happen is, is that we then make this rule, and then the staff has to come and look at the proposed drainage facility that's proposed to be in a setback, and then they have to say, okay, well, there's actually a utility easement here, and I can see that this utility easement isn't being used, or it's a phone pole and it's not going to affect the drainage feature, but because it's in an easement, now I need it to go back to city council, or you have to have a moat. And I just don't want that to, to happen. There, there has to be some more parameter around this rule if we're going to put a rule into place that gives staff direction to be able to do this without having to come to the city council for an appeal. But there are tools that the staff can use to make this decision.
I want to also, that even if the utility came through and they ripped up the drainage facilities, it doesn't absolve that property owner from negatively impacting their neighbor. They still have a responsibility to not adversely impact their neighbor. So that doesn't go away, no matter, no matter what we do, that's state law.
And I think that's, that has been a point that we have talked about in May many times along this way, and I know that there are some disagreements about where water should be discharged, but the state law says that you cannot put more water on your neighbor than what was there before. It doesn't say you have to discharge it 10 feet within your property. So I want our ordinance to follow state law and not to be used as a vehicle to prevent somebody from building the house that they want to build in that footprint. So I move to table this until we can get some more information about, you know, I would even table it indefinitely unless, but I'm, I'm willing to have the conversation and have more parameters put around it, because I know it's important to my colleague. It's, it's, it's an item that I'm willing to discuss more if the council wants to.
Well, counsel, we have a motion to postpone. Second, well, I guess the only question I have is, is the motion to postpone for next month?
Is that enough time for staff, or would you need a little bit more time to kind of do a study of the easements in the plats that could be affected? And give us some parameters that might be helpful, or a recommendation from staff of what, what the rule might look like that would be helpful for you to be able to make these decisions independent of an appeal from the city council?
I think we would need at least the, not the next meeting, but the following in order to look at a year's worth of plats. And then if you were wanting to go back further, it's a, it's a, it's a large undertaking.
Large undertaking.
Let's table it.
Is that an expensive undertaking?
Let's table it time-sensitive. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Before you do that, before you do that, quick question. So Carrie, in, in your research, how much confidence do you have when you're coming across a PUE of whether it's an above ground, like an overhead PUE, or an underground, like for a water line? Are you able to determine that pretty easily on a case-by-case basis?
Not, not necessarily. My, my, my recommendation, and, you know, it's just my recommendation, but no more of these than come to council every year, maybe two, and they're always different, and the plats are always different. And we have some valid plats that are, you know, 15 years old, or that were, you know, I don't want to speak to the validity of any plat to carry the weight that you all may want. I would say if it's just going to be two or three variances before council a year, I would encourage you to look at these on a case-by-case basis, rather than try to put in, to do, to do research and put in something restrictive that then may create a situation where we have to allow something based on a plat that you would not have otherwise allowed necessarily.
That's fair.
I'm okay with that, I just feel like the language that's there now doesn't give, I feel like it still keeps the moat situation status quo. Like, that it all, there's so many easements and unused easements that there need to be some thought and parameters, or at least we need to look back and see if, maybe I'm totally wrong, and you're right, there's only going to be three of these a year. But I, I just don't want to have this come back to the moat situation that it was.
All right, guys, do we have a motion in a second to postpone?
And I would say postpone to, not next month, but the month after, so two months from now. I would amend my motion.
Motion in a second, postpone till July. I don't know that Charlie would require us to take a motion on this, but just in case. There we go, discussion. Gavin. Wendy.
Hi.
Amy.
Hi.
Buck. Buck.
Hi.
Thanks, Sarah.
Hi.
All right, we're postponed until July. On item 10, item 11, discussion and possible action on ordinance amending Section 103, 177 of the city's Code of Ordinances, requiring all residential structures to be constructed a minimum of two feet above the base flood elevation. For context, counsel, this is down to Atlas 14, and, well, just the general idea that you should really be thoughtful in building in a floodplain.
I move ordinance number 2020-20-11.
Sorry, say that again?
I move passage of ordinance 2020-05-2011.
There we go, we've got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion Gavin, second from Wendy, discussion, counsel?
My understanding is this is just making code comply with the map that we've already adopted, is that right?
No, this is a little bit above and beyond, actually. In regards to the two-foot rise, or to have a home two feet above the 100-year floodplain is...
But Jay, that was recommended by the state agency, correct? So it's a best practices?
It's completely optional, it's up to the city whether or not you want to do it.
That wasn't the question, Jay, the question wasn't whether or not it's optional or mandatory, the question was whether it's best practices.
Yes, it is.
There's a reason brought, brought forward.
But we, my point was, we already did this.
Non-mandatory best management practice.
Back up, Amber, my point was, we already did this, we already considered this several months ago, right?
Yes.
And this is just making the actual code that we adhere to agree with what we've already contemplated a couple of months ago, correct?
Yes.
That's where I stand.
Sarah, you have a hand, Chris?
I did.
Sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I was wondering what this does to our building height limitations? If we're, if we're saying that now the foundation has to be higher, what does that do to the limitation on building height with relation to ground elevation?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't typically look at the building height, that's not part of my review, but I'd have to visit that.
So it would actually shorten the building height by two feet.
Did y'all hear, Carrie? She said it would shorten the height by two feet. But this is for structures in the... Yeah, it's only for structures that are in the floodplain, right?
Yep.
So...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't shorten the, well, I guess it would shorten the structure on top of the foundation, which is the structure. So you're still limited at 35 feet from elevate, or from ground elevation, is that right?
Okay, yes.
Or grave, right?
Houses that were built, noncompliant?
No, you can't make something noncompliant that's already there.
It would be a noncompliant structure.
But, but they're allowed to still be there until they make a change. But Section 3 says that all provisions of the ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict, so does that not mean that this supersedes the height limit from ground elevation?
No.
Okay.
Okay, ahead, Amy, sorry, didn't see you in the corner.
Sure. Can someone refresh my memory on what it was that, what document was it that we already voted to do this in that we're basing this off of, that Gavin was asking about?
It was a document that Jake created with some recommendations that he had received from the state agency in regard to improvements we could make to our code. So when we were looking at it, we, we had asked, hey, are there some other places in our code that we need to beef up to protect our homeowners? And this one seemed like really low-hanging fruit. So it was in adoption of the map, but then also while we were looking at the map with that, let's go ahead and take a comprehensive evaluation of our code and see what, what things the state agency might recommend.
When we adopted the map, the map requires that the lowest floor be elevated at a minimum two feet above.
No, the map, no, the map doesn't require that, it was just a best practices recommendation from the state agency.
It's to be in compliance with Atlas 14, correct?
It's not mandatory, no.
I know, it's not mandatory, but that's where it's all going. That's what got brought up originally was, Sarah brought up Atlas 14 when you did the maps the first time.
No, I would not look at it that way. I mean, the Atlas 14 is going to change the floodplain boundary, and likely it'll change from what you see as the 100-year today will be the 500-year once Atlas 14 is incorporated into the flood maps. So this was just brought up by NFIP during this time with discussions with FEMA. They suggested some of these optional improvements. This one is probably at the top, this is at the top of the list. This is the one I would recommend, if any, to consider changing the flood ordinance.
So can you clarify then, Jay, for me, like on my property? My entire property is in the floodplain? So would there... Yes, so would there, would it make, render my, my property unbuildable then in the future?
No, you can still build within the floodplain, you just have to elevate your home two feet above the 100-year floodplain elevation.
And what type of structure would be allowed to do that?
Well, you just have the ground, you have to build up the ground above, two feet above, since your finished floor elevation would be two feet above the 100-year floodplain. You could do a parent beam otherwise, you could have a house, you could have flow going through underneath your house. There's a lot of options, but the point is that your finished floor elevation would be two feet above the 100-year floodplain elevation.
So right now, the way that our house was built, it is built on the part of the property that's elevated, and there's a waterway built. So there's really not a risk of flooding on our property, even if, like, even in the hardest storms that we've ever had.
Yeah.
But that means that if I were to sell my property right now and someone wanted to rebuild on it, they would have to elevate the existing space by two feet?
Finished floor elevation, yeah, that's correct.
The entire, so you're saying the entire lot now would have to be elevated? To do modifications on the property?
It would be the finished floor elevation, the main, the floor of the, of the house.
I just, I don't know, I'm, initially I thought that we were, I mean, I, I thought that we, like, I thought we were adopting something we'd already adopted, like Gavin was saying, but I am concerned about, I'm not the only one that potentially would have this issue, and we're basically making a bunch of houses nonconforming.
I don't think you would make them nonconforming.
My house right now, if we adopt this, I think would become nonconforming, right?
Only in the instance that they wanted to completely tear down and reconstruct, then they would have to meet the new code, but it, it's not like they would have to raise the home to live there.
But you're, effectively, I'm, like, we're voting to make all of the structures that are currently in the floodplain.
So let's just be clear too, which floodplain are we talking about? 100-year floodplain?
We're talking about the 100-year floodplain, yes, and not many homes, there are not many lots, I don't think there are any homes that right now are in the 100-year floodplain, but when the Atlas 14 kicks in, there will be several lots and homes that are going to be within the 100-year floodplain.
We don't have to approve the Atlas 14 either.
No.
So we're not necessarily under the Atlas 14 unless you, council took action to adopt the Atlas 14. And I don't recommend doing that because you want to remain flexible to respond to different drainage needs at, you know, as they present themselves, there might be different ways, you might be able to respond as a pre-Atlas 14 measure versus an Atlas 14 measure, which would save you money. So I hope that helps.
I guess I'm just, I'm confused because there are homes that are in the 100-year floodplain. I'm not the only one, I've looked them up, so if this is not a requirement, I get that it's a best practice. I'm just wondering why we would take it up without fully evaluating the effect on the properties that are going to become nonconforming if we pass this. if we pass this. Like my property will effectively become non-conforming to our code if we pass this.
So Amy, I'm, I'm sorry for the, you know, uh, I'm actually staring at a flood plain map right now. And we, the only hundred year flood plain, as, as it currently sit, is, is Eames Creek. We do have stretch of 500 year flood plain, and you're correct that your, your home would be in the 500 year flood plain, uh, your entire, almost your, not your entire lot, but close to. Um, and that's the case um, with at least three other, four other lots, where the majority of the lot would fall into the five, or that currently fall into the 500 year flood plain. And by the look of it, just a rough count, there's probably about a dozen properties, uh, residential properties that are in the 500 year flood plain currently.
If y'all want to take some time to fully evaluate it, that would be fine. I think just given the concerns expressed here, I would feel better for my neighbors just to take some time and evaluate it, and then if, if that's okay with everyone else, bring it back, because.
No, with.
But it seems like right now, there's no impact.
My property, but there's, I, sorry, we may interrupt.
I, I said right now, it seems like there'd be no impact unless we actually then adopted the Atlas, the new Atlas rain. So right now, it would just keep somebody from building their structure at ground level in a hundred year flood plain, which if they did that right now, it probably wouldn't be a good thing for them to do. So it'd be making somebody in the hundred year flood plain who has a property there built at two feet up. Exactly. Which I think is probably good practice.
The current, current, current standpoint is that's only going to impact your commercial properties at this 10 seconds. But as Amy correctly pointed out, and, and Jay concurs, once Atlas 14 comes into play, uh, any number of those 500 year flood plains are, uh, home, they're part of a dozen properties, residential properties are likely to move into the hundred year plain.
Let's be careful about saying once Atlas 14 comes into play, because you still have the option.
Sure.
To what's likely to be your community, right?
Okay, thank you.
Well, to be correct. I'd like to speak to the point real quick, though. Uh, it'll probably be about a year and a half when the, when FEMA actually recognizes the Atlas 14 rain holdup and creates new flood plain boundary, you know, new flood maps. And at that time, we will be expected to approve them. You know, that's probably at least a year and a half out. The city of Austin is currently doing studies, uh, and they're contracted with FEMA to, to carry out these studies that will be used to create new flood plain boundaries throughout city of Austin and surrounding areas. But that will be coming down on, like, probably about a year and a half away, we will get the, the Atlas 14 will make it to the, um, FEMA map.
Okay.
So I appreciate everyone being able to look at it further.
Yeah, sure, try.
Sorry, go ahead.
Gavin withdrew his motion, just in case anybody else didn't hear.
It would be helpful when we have this come back to actually have the map that it's talking about, because I feel like I'm, I'm a little confused about which maps we're talking about now, because even we've, we've had different maps even in tonight's meeting, and there's a lot of different maps going on, and I thought I knew which one we were talking about, but I clearly don't. And it would be helpful to have that clarification when this comes back.
Council, could I ask that you table it indefinitely? And then if you want it to be brought back, that you make a request to us, and that way we're, we're not working on something maybe that you don't, you're, you're not even interested in, or, you know, feels like it could be detrimental to the community. Um, we're, we're happy to, um, kickstart it if, if you want us to.
It's a great, it's a great thought, Amber. Council, any objections to, uh, an indefinite postponement? And if we want to bring this up, uh, some level of affirmative action on any of our behalfs? Not hearing any, uh, objection, can I get a motion? Okay, we could also just not take.
Table this indefinitely. Oh, I not take action. I will not take action.
Okay, so wait, is that a motion or no action?
No action.
Okay.
I don't know, what do you, what, what do you need?
Either way, guys, if you want to. Or, or you could just not take action, we can move on to the next thing.
Let's go.
Any objection to moving on? Not hearing any, I'm going to call up item 12, discussion possible action to approve the budget calendar for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and to discuss general approach. Uh, Gavin, Amber, I know you guys spent some time, getting this calendar together.
Yeah, everyone take a look, this is the proposed, uh, budget calendar for this year, including workshops. Um, kind of gives you the full rundown of what we've done for the last two years, thanks to Amber and Abel for putting this together. It is based on what we have, uh, the timeline that we've used the last couple of years. In addition, they've made sure that it's in compliance with the code, um, related to when we need to adopt things. So, um, if this is okay with everyone, I would make a motion to adopt it. Um, and that just gives you a, a sense of what we're going to be doing over the next few months.
Second.
Perfect.
Motion and a second, discussion council. Hey, just so y'all are aware, August 19th is the first day of school for the fall. Okay. Whatever that's worth.
Home school, huh?
Yeah.
Hopefully not.
Um, is that August 19th? Is that our standing? Amber, is that our standing council meeting?
It is, yes.
Okay. Buck, we can maybe adjust that as we get closer to it.
All right.
Good call.
That's some, that's some forward looking there, Buck. Die roll.
Impressive.
All right, guys, we have a motion and a second. Um, we'll call the vote, we're good, Gavin?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
All right, this calendar is adopted tentatively. Item 13, discussion and possible action. Uh, thank you, Amber and Gavin for, and Abel for putting it together, uh, discussion and possible action to review applications and make appointments. Um, the only, we have one application. Council, it's Mike Rhodes, uh, he applied, uh, previously, Board of Adjustments in P&amp;Z at the time, uh, requesting one of those two. At the time, we didn't have open, openings, uh, in the consent agenda, you accepted Josh McKay's resignation from P&amp;Z, so we have an opening there. Um, can I recommend that Michael Rhodes be appointed to planning and zoning?
Do you want to make that motion, Gavin?
Go ahead, I heard someone pulled the trigger.
I did, I said so moved.
All right, we've got a motion from Sarah, a second from, is that Wendy, I think?
Yeah, second.
Second. Cool, Gavin?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Great, welcome to the show, Mr. Rhodes, glad to have you. 14, discussion and possible action on an ordinance amending, uh, the city's code of ordinance, section 32 dash 116, parking by permit only, special events to include trail of lights and blues on the green. My goodness, this is ambitious, I don't think we're ever getting together again in public, ever. But just in case we do, we now are faced with, uh, adopting a parking, uh, uh, ordinance that is, uh, is it akin to or identical to what we have adopted for ACL?
It is the ACL, it's the ACL ordinance that just includes blues on the green and trail of lights. It was approved in concept at the February 18th, uh, council meeting, and, um, it was asked that it be brought back in its final form, and we are.
Great, yes ma'am, Wendy?
Um, I had an epiphany, 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 yeah, um, about this, um, that I'd like to share. So, uh, rather than having staff spend time to print out individual parking permits for people parking in front of all of these multiple events, um, as guests, um, in Aspen, when you, uh, rent a property, they have those little, like, the handicap hard plastic hangers that you can put on the rearview mirror, and the homes that they rent out have those, and then you just return them to the owner. So we could, um, get those plastic things that you hang on the mirror that people can provide for their gifts, gifts that actually have their address on it and are the color of the zone they're in. And then the stickers that go, uh, on the cars for the residents, and then not have to mail these things every time we have an event.
Great, can I?
Just a second.
If you go that route, um, that replacements, uh, are charged?
Yeah, probably. It would be a good idea, but it's by specific address.
What, what happens when your guest runs off with your pass?
Hunt him down, hunt him down.
There's got to be some, uh, level of ownership here.
Yeah.
All right.
With that, um, I will move to amend the city's code of ordinance 32 dash 116, parking by permit only, special events to include trail of lights and blues on the green.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion council.
Um, my one comment is, even though events may be far off, when they do return, people may be trying to use their own cars more and taking the transportation options. So I think it's good to get it in place now and to think through logistics like what Wendy has suggested, so that we really have it down. Um, especially during blues on the green, we don't always need the whole neighborhood to be, uh, permit parking only necessarily, and so just thinking about how we're going to message that to residents on the nights that are blues on the green and a lot of other logistics to make this work a little more seamlessly when it is time to go there. Be great.
Great. Uh, jokes aside, I certainly hope the events come back sooner rather than later, uh, and safely, uh, return sooner rather than later. Um, uh, and you're right, uh, this is a good time to get your plans in place. Uh, we have a motion, a second, we have further discussion, council. Gavin, what do you say?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Buck, I see your hat and your elbows.
Aye.
Good work, Sarah?
Aye.
Oh my gosh, all right, motion passed, because guys, I can smell the finish line here. Um, 15, that's a update, uh, for South MoPAC expansion. Uh, Amy? I'll give you a second, nothing? Need a moment? All set? Nothing, nothing new.
I don't have an update.
Wendy, update?
We are just in a holding pattern there, because of COVID, they're delaying their, their open houses, so we don't have any new information.
Man, at least there's some silver lining to this awful mess we're in. 16, um, do we have an update for the B Cave Improvement Project? Tech start?
I have no update.
I have no update, we might need to take that standing agenda item off for a little while, I think.
But I, I'm, I'm going to throw a curve ball at you and say, um, that Tech Start installed a sidewalk. Uh, and it doesn't really connect anything yet. Uh, but, uh, there is some, uh, sidewalk activity that was put in place at the, uh, corner of Rollingwood Drive and B Caves Road, so.
That's part of the West Lake project.
That's correct, but don't sleep on item 16. We've got enough.
Okay.
All right, guys.
I'm going to keep positive on it, then, let's keep it.
Right on, assuming there's nothing else. Um, just for the record, um, items 17 through 27, those are your reports, those are available, uh, to the public should they need them. Um, I trust everyone is aware of the information there. At this point, uh, if there's nothing else, council, uh, I'll move to adjourn, everybody.
Uh, you, you're moving to adjourn?
Uh, well, I'm going to have to do it. I'm pretty sure I don't have a.
So moved. So moved.
We have motions and seconds all over the board, Gavin? Are we getting out of here? Wendy?
Aye.
Get out of here, Amy?
See ya.
Aye.
Aye.
Sarah moved out, Buck, you know, you're the end, Buck? Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Staff, everybody else at board with us, thank you very much. You guys, appreciate it, four hours.
Thank y'all for your hard work.
Team, thank you.